Good evening. Going to go ahead and call this meeting to order? First, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Summit Point students Kingston, Elise Faith, and Eliana. All right, welcome everyone to tonight's board meeting. Today is December 19th. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next up is item 2.01 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you Board of Education, everybody who was able to attend today. Couple things. First off, happy holidays. We do have an early release tomorrow, so if you're a parent, make sure you remember that. They're going to get to you quicker tomorrow because we get out a little bit early and we'll have two weeks of no students. So enjoy your holiday break and everything that comes with it. Something else that's not in my report, just to let you know that today we had over, I think it was over 50 kids in our Grow Your Own program come from college and spent a whole day of professional development over at Summit Tech Academy. And we do have our first kid who's going to graduate this year. She's graduating a year quicker than the rest of her peers. And she does have a certification that's in a job that we have open after our retirement tonight. So she will get to interview for a job. It'll be our first Grow Your Own interviewing for us. So that's pretty exciting. And later, we'll have an agenda item recognizing two state champions. And President Foley will read about those, and I kind of mentioned those last time. Couple congratulations here. Congratulations to staff and students. At the Lee Summit High School reflector yearbook for the 23-24 edition because it's one of 23 in the nation to receive not one but two national honors in the last week. The Columbia Scholastic Press Association named it a crown finalist. In March, it will receive either a gold or silver distinction. And then Tuesday, the National Scholastic Press Association named the reflector a peacemaker finalist. The recognition signifies the reflector is in the top 1% of yearbooks across country. So kudos to them. Lee Summit North Athletic Director Mike McGurk on Tuesday was honored with the Frank Kowalewski Professional Development Award by the National Interscholastic Athletic Association. The award recognizes Mr. McGurk's advocacy for professional development, teaching and presenting at the national state conferences about a variety of topics, including student leadership and effective event management, as well as his involvement at the state level, serving as the president of Missouri Interscholastic Athletic Administrator Association. And he was recently a national president too of all the athletic directors. So kudos to Mike. Summit Point Elementary, who you're going to see here in a little bit, and maybe Cherie is out there, I haven't seen Cherie yet, but Assistant Principal Cherie Swearengen was named the Kansas City Area Assistant Principal of the Year by the Kansas City Elementary Principals Association. Nominator said, "Ms. Swearengen is hardworking, always puts students first, and she inspires everyone to do their best." And we surprised her in assembly. She thought she was leading assembly. Instead, it was really there to surprise her. The kids were very excited to see her get the award. Tuesday, we also had the opportunity to surprise Westview Elementary kindergarten teacher Nicole Madsen with the Learning for Life Award. Learning for Life Award, there's one per month. Peers nominate, and then there's a selection committee that picks 12 for the calendar year, and then they parse those out over the 12 months. And so this is the last one of our 2024 calendar year, and it's Nicole Madsen. Ms. Madsen was nominated by our colleagues for several reasons, including her involvement in several committees around the school, her welcoming and collaborative spirit, and her ability to connect with all students no matter their needs. Just to let you know that now through December 28th, you'll see incredible works of nine LSR7 students at the City of Merriam Annual High School Visual Arts Competition. They received 640 pieces submitted and only 100 accepted. And 11 of those 100 are from our nine artists here in LSR7, so kudos to them. Daniel Freezeout Event hosted by Tiger Smart, Bronco Smart, and Titan Smart made a huge impact, collecting hundreds of items that will reach around Lee Summit. Four bags of clothing will stay here in Lee Summit in the school district. But then they made deliveries of three carfuls of donations to Coldwater and Lee Summit Social Services. And you can see the list of the impressive collection they collected. So kudos to them, and thank you for their service. Lee Summit High School teacher Cam Pack was awarded the Outstanding Teacher of American History for the State by the Missouri State Society Daughters of American Revolution. Mr. Pack will be honored the Daughters of American Revolution Missouri State Convention in April. Two updates for you. Filing is open for board candidacy, and it's open through December 31st for community members interested in running for the LSR7 Board of Education on the April 8th, 2025 ballot. The Lee Summit R7 School District will accept declarations of candidacy for any person interested in running. Those interested must file with the Secretary of Board of Education, Ms. Linda Ismer, at the school district's offices located at 301 Northeast Tudor Road. Filing will continue during regular business hours and end on December 31st at 5:00 p.m. And I want to thank Ms. Ismer. That means that December 31st, she has to spend the day up here because we have to be open on the last day. So we're getting ready to go on holiday break, including Ms. Ismer. So you've got tomorrow basically, and you've got December 31st. So send warm thoughts that she spends her holiday here with the rest of the building empty on New Year's Eve. Nominations close on January 13th for our Excellence in Teaching and Support Professional Excellence Awards. The Excellence in Teaching Award recognizes teachers, counselors, or library media specialists who demonstrate dedication and excellence in their roles for at least five years in LSR7. The Support Professional Excellence Award honors non-administrative, non-teaching certified staff who serve LSR7 for at least one year. And again, last one, remember it's an early release tomorrow, they'll get into you quicker. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, next up, we have item 3.01 Elementary Spotlight, Summit Point Elementary.
Thanks for letting us be here tonight. Tonight, we're going to have two things on our agenda for Summit Point. The first thing we're going to do is recognize a volunteer. I'm going to read a couple of statements from staff about our volunteer, Ms. Sammy Jo Wood. Here's what some staff said. "From school parties to teacher luncheons to communications, Sammy Jo is doing it all with a smile. I'm pretty sure she's on every committee and happy to be. SPE is lucky to have her as a parent here. She's always willing to help out with a smile and no hesitation. We're lucky to have such a thoughtful, generous, and supportive parent like Sammy Jo. Anything we need, she doesn't hesitate. She's amazing." So Sammy Jo, thank you from the staff and students at Summit Point.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know her family's over there too, so we appreciate them being here, and they are often up at Summit Point quite a bit helping too.
So before we move on to your next one, I think we'll come, if you two can come to the center of the board, we'll join you, and we'll have a little photo op. And thank you again for your service.
Next for our spotlight, we wanted to share with you a new program we're offering at Summit Point Elementary. Our counselors, Mrs. Finn and Mrs. Cole, have started a new leadership opportunity for our fifth graders. It's called the Panther Patrol. And tonight, we have some of those kiddos here. We have Kingston Carter, Ava Kursa Lee, Faith Ademuwah, Noah Arnold, Elena Kuhar, Lexi Brown, and Elise Wilson. Our wonderful PR department made a video that we thought would highlight a little bit better than we could speak to, and you'll see some of these kiddos in the video too.
Good afternoon, Panthers. It is now time for dismissal. Teachers, at this time, please release your Panther Patrol.
It feels nice. Really, it's pretty easy. Bye. Have a great weekend. I get to help kids do the right thing, help them around the building if I need to, send them to adult if they're hurt.
90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96.
Just a little snippet of what they do. They're really focused on radical hospitality, and their goal is to greet kids, get them to the right places, help the little kids out. Their kind of responsibilities end tomorrow, and they've all begged if they could continue after break because we try to make it a rotation to get as many kids as involved as we can. So it's been a really positive thing for Summit Point. Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Appreciate your parents for bringing you too.
Can we get a picture with them? I've been asked if we can get a picture with them. Is that okay?
Next up, we have the Secondary School Spotlight, Lee Summit North High School.
Good evening. Tonight, it's my honor and privilege to present Ms. Sandy Domeno. She has served at Lee Summit North as a volunteer for several years, for over 20 years. And she has spent the last 20 years serving our students through our concession stand. She's given an enormous amount of time and effort to just providing service to our kids. It's long overdue that we're recognizing her. She's a smiling face that our kids, our patrons, all of you may come and see. She's always working in the concession stand. She said to me on the way in tonight, "I have to get back over there and help clean up tonight." So she's excited to be here. We're excited to welcome her. We're excited to celebrate her. But please help me recognize Sandy Domeno as Lee Summit North Volunteer of the Year. Tonight, our school spotlight will feature one of our outstanding programs at Lee Summit North, our Life Skills Program. This program has gone through several transitions over the past year, the biggest change being our staffing. Tonight, one of our Life Skills teacher, Ms. Jessica Traister, is here tonight to share and highlight all the amazing things happening in our Life Skills Program. Before I turn it over to her, I would just like to take a brief moment and say that our staff in this program is absolutely outstanding and amazing. Jessica has embraced her new role and has helped lead our staff and students into this school year by creating an inviting, magical, positive, and engaging space for all students. I would encourage any of you to come and visit us in our Life Skills Program any day you would like. You will just walk away with a big smile on your face. With all that said, it is my pleasure to turn this over to her so that she can highlight our Life Skills Program. So Ms. Jessica Traister.
Good evening. As he said, we would like to highlight our program and particularly how Lee Summit North has really embraced our students and made sure that we are including them in every part of school life. So for those unfamiliar with Life Skills, we serve the students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. Our focus is on those independent living skills, whether they're going to be living at home with family and helping around the house, or maybe living in a supported, independent living environment, as well as their vocational skills in that inclusive setting. And our goal is to help students gain skills to meet those individual goals for their post-secondary success, whatever that looks like for each individual student. And we do this by focusing on our comprehensive school improvement goals. So that very first CSIP goal, that ensuring student growth through high-quality academic, personalized experiences. Our curriculum is tailored to individual needs. We have students who use assistive communication devices, students who are working on very simple concepts like putting something in or taking out, all the way to students that are reading at about a second or third grade level. And again, we're focusing on those transition goals. What is a successful post-high school life going to look like, living, socially, career? The second CSIP goal is fostering that inclusive environment, and this is where Lee Summit North shines. The very first picture we had was our Theater for Everyone group. They got to do a dance before our school musical. I'm very excited that this year we have a representative on the student council so that she gets to make sure that our students' interests and needs are being met. We partner a lot with our content area classes. Our Spanish classes came and did a Dia de los Muertos activity with us. Our school store, the shirt I'm wearing, one of my freshmen actually designed. They sent their managers down. He helped discover, he helped tell them what he wanted to look like. We have a paraprofessional, that's a graphic designer, that helped put it in a format that he could color it in to make it look exactly what he liked. We had Amped on Algebra work with our students to design a new logo for our Crimson Cafe, and we're so excited that next semester, our competitive drama students are going to teach our kids how to do informational speeches, whatever that looks like for them, and then they'll participate in a showcase. We have after-school activities. Anytime I've asked Dr. Collins, "Can we provide para support?", he's always said yes. And so we have students involved in things like student council, archery, and these other activities. And then our peer-inclusive environment. These are general education students that come, and they have embraced our students. This year, they designed their own final, and each class came up with an activity, including going to John Knox Village to play bingo with the residents. So it's just been really a neat program. Our cultivating partnerships, which is another CSIP goal, we've had guest speakers in the Department of Conservation. We have done community-based instruction. We went to Faulkner's Ranch and learned about pumpkins. Service projects, we got to go to John Knox Village to play bingo with the residents, and they were so excited. And then as part of our practical vocational prep for those internal stakeholders, we're doing meaningful jobs around the building to support the school. And then this is all done because of our amazing staff that Dr. Collins mentioned. That final CSIP goal that we work on is creating a supportive workplace. We do have three teachers and nine paraprofessionals. All of our staff are encouraged to give feedback. And one of the things our paras started doing this year is that they have a monthly collaboration where they work with each other. They come up with the speakers. The teachers have nothing to do with this, to make sure that they are providing that high quality, and they're highlighted in that newsletter. And there is one story I think that just exemplifies what happens in this program and the amazing Lee Summit North. We had a freshman who said she wanted to be a lawyer. We had a group from the American Bar Association come, and we were told students would be invited based on classes they were taking to hear this group speak. So we reached out and said, "Could this student participate?" It was within their rights to say, "No, she doesn't meet the requirements," but instead they said, "How can we make this work?" I was told a lawyer from Georgia sat down and had a one-on-one conversation with her at her level, and she came out beaming from ear to ear. Anytime we have asked, "How do we include our students?", the answer has never been "No". It is, "How do we make them a part of this school?". And so we're very excited that Lee Summit North is including our students, and we invite you to come see us anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have 3.03 Recognizing State Championship Swimmers. The Lee Summit R7 School District is celebrating the achievements of state champion swimmers Nathan Butler and Noah Reeves, both seniors at Lee Summit High School. Nathan placed first in the 100 Fly at the State Championships. Noah placed first in the 50 Free and set a new state record with his time. Both Nathan and Noah were undefeated in those individual events all season and broke a number of school records. Noah broke nine individual school records. Nathan broke eight individual school records. According to their coach, Ryan Lee, "It's a coach's dream when you get extremely talented athletes that do not just rely on their natural talents, but instead work hard every day to enhance their talents." Nathan will continue his academic and athletic career at Missouri S&amp;T in the fall. Noah will continue his academic and athletic career at Florida Atlantic University in the fall. Congratulations. All right. That was priceless. All right, next up, we have item 3.04 Student Board Representatives.
Hold a moment. Hello, my name is Avea Hall, and I am a student. I'm a senior at Lee Summit North High School, and I'd just like to quickly share all of the amazing things we've done in the past few months. Sorry, I have the list of things on my phone. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. Okay, the first thing we did, which I believe is truly amazing, is National Honor Society raised more than $2,400 for adoptive family, which is where we essentially adopt a family for the Christmas season that otherwise doesn't have the money to supply their children with gifts. So we were able to raise over $2,400, and our initial goal was $1,200, so that's two times our goal. Additionally, Youth in Government just finished, and we got multiple bills passed in both of our House and our Senate with a Lee Summit North student, Kylie Mead, leading us as governor. And then two of our students made Missouri All-State Orchestra, and eight students made All-State Band. Additionally, Lee Summit North Student Council worked alongside West and Lee Summit to help with Winterfest, an event where we connected with kids in elementary school across LSR7. And then in one of my courses, in our college credit English class, we were assigned to find and solve an issue within Kansas City, and there were multiple different presentations ranging from issues like library hours to anything like school lunch. And then Lee Summit North Leadership Academy went to Westview and Mason Elementary kindergarten classrooms to essentially hang out with them for a few hours and also supply them all with a couple of books. They received about 10 books each as a student. They were little books just teaching them about things like our planet and other things like that. And then this Monday, our orchestra hosted their holiday concert. And this November, our student council wrote cards to our custodial staff and had a group of students help clean windows, railings, and stairs before Thanksgiving break to give them a boost into their break. And lastly, as Dr. Buck has already stated, our Bronco Smart helped raise food and clothes for homeless individuals with their Freezeout Event. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Emmy Harmon, and I'm from Lee Summit West.
And I'm Logan Henry. To start us off, it's finals week at Lee Summit West and the other high schools, so all the seniors and all the grades are taking finals.
Additionally, throughout the district, this is our last week with our phones, so students are having their last days with their phones in classes.
Titan Legacy at Lee Summit West gave its first award to Ms. Christine Miller. She's a lunch lady at Lee Summit West, and anyone who's ever met her knows she's well-deserving of this award.
Our theater department has been hard at work with Beauty and the Beast wrapping up a few weeks ago and several other shows, including Christmas of the Bells last week, and they've all been huge successes in our school.
Our girls' basketball team is doing really good this year, kicking off their season. They're currently ranked eight in the Metro.
And then choir, band concerts were this week. And additionally, we have several students who made district and all-state choirs and bands, and we are so proud of them.
National Honor Society at Lee Summit West had over 1,000 hours of volunteering this semester.
The Journalism and Film Holiday Mart that happens every year at Lee Summit West had over thousands of attendees and raised lots of money for the media programs at Lee Summit West.
And then this past week, all seniors in a language took their seals of biliteracy, so those are going to be coming back any day now.
And then last but not least, Titan Ambassadors have finished their semester of service in their freshman classrooms, and it's been incredibly rewarding to help the freshmen. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Garen Simpkins. I'm from Lee Summit High School.
And I'm Addison DeDamo. I'm also a senior at Lee Summit High School.
So some good thing that's happened recently is Lee Summit High School plays first in a recent basketball tournament over at St. Louis, first time in school history and I believe Lee Summit history for all teams, if I'm not mistaken. We recently had a play called "May We All" that went great. The production was great. I believe it was three days. Loads of people came. It was really amazing. I even went. It was really fun to watch. NHS Service Projects, we had also almost 1,000 hours of people coming in and volunteering of all sorts of things, assisted living, Special Olympics, animal shelters, photos with Santa. There was a lot of opportunities this year, and it was really fun to do. And the last is a longstanding tradition that's coming up this Friday. It's candle lighting, where we represent, have a tradition at Lee Summit High School, I believe it's almost 100 years old, if I'm not mistaken, representing religions. Having a day for that before the holiday season comes up, it's really amazing. All the kids dress up and everything. It's really a huge production put on by NHS itself, so.
Hi, everyone again. So we also just had our Veterans Day Assembly. Our school is really well-known for our Veterans Day Assembly. We have over 100 veterans that come out for that day, and our students all put it on between the band and the choir and ROTC. And we have numerous speakers, so that is an all-school event that everyone attends, and we always are really well-recognized for that. We have one student in our school that just got nominations for all three service academies, United States Naval Academy, United States Air Force Academy, and the United States Military Academy at West Point. That's me. Sorry, I had to brag on myself. Sorry, I'm telling all my friends, and they're like, "Oh, cool." I'm like, "I gotta tell someone else." So, got those done. Again, we also have finals going on right now. A lot of our students are wrapping up, hopefully getting those grades kind of finalized and finished up. We have the no-phone policy currently, so that is currently helping a lot of our students on our grades and their study habits. So hoping to find good results for that for this semester. And then obviously, winter break's coming up, so give the teachers a break from us and a break from ourselves, so. So that is our good things at Lee Summit.
Before you all leave, wait, Addison, I have a question for you. Which one are you gonna pick? I have to know. Which one are you gonna pick?
Hopefully, you have a different category.
That's awesome. But that's also, I just want to say thank you to all of you students who came, especially during finals week. I know this is super busy for you all, so thank you for your time and thank you for being here. We love hearing from you. Thank you. Next up, we have 4.01, Public Comment.
We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that the board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments may be, will be noted by the board and administration, and if appropriate, we will discuss further action with the superintendent. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than seven people with a limit of three minutes each. You may not transfer any of your time to other speakers. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Your comments must align with the subject described in your written request to speak and must directly relate to the business or operations of the district. Your comments may not discuss individual employees or students in the district, regardless of whether your comments speak of them in a positive or negative light. Any such comments should be directed to the superintendent, who will then determine if further action is needed. Because the board does not and cannot impose age-based restrictions on who attends or views board meetings, and because children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, comments may not include obscenities or sexually explicit content. Furthermore, comments may not include threats of physical or emotional harm or threaten in any way the safety of others. We also remind all those in the audience that Board Policy BDDH prohibits the use of signs or audible responses. This includes applause, cheers, or jeers. If you're in the audience and wish to respond in some way to a public comment, you may contact the board or superintendent after the meeting. Your comments must be directed only to the board because the purpose of public comment is to bring something to the attention of the board. You may not speak to or interact in any way with any person in the audience. When your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any. Becca Baumgartner.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the board members for your time and service to our local community. My name is Rebecca Baumgartner. I'm a registered nurse and mother of four, two of which attend LSE. I'm here tonight to respectfully request the removal of the proposed closure of Lee Summit Elementary from the 2025 bond. I appreciated the thoughtful discussion at the last board meeting regarding facility name changes and the importance of a thorough process, including community involvement and community input. If such processes are vital for naming decisions, surely they are even more critical when considering the closure of an entire school. Proceeding with closure without a similar level of transparency and due diligence would set a concerning precedent for the district. I urge you to maintain the same integrity and respect for process in this matter. There are viable alternatives to address LSE's declining enrollment, some of which were mentioned by the Assistant Superintendent. However, the community and staff have not been given adequate time or opportunity to explore these alternatives. LSE's enrollment fluctuates, and closures won't resolve the larger issue of district-wide enrollment decline. I ask you to consider focusing on the broader solutions to this problem rather than targeting one school. As for concerns raised about LSE's facilities, yes, many families have seen renderings of the future waiting classrooms from the Assistant Superintendent's presentation at the November 12 PTA meeting. However, as someone who grew up with economic instability, I can assure you that what students need most is not new classrooms, but stability, consistency, and a strong sense of community. LSE already provides that through dedicated educators, a principal who knows each family, and a nurturing environment that helps students thrive. LSE is deeply embedded in the downtown Lee Summit community. It offers unique opportunities that contribute to students' education, such as walking to the farmer's market for agricultural awareness, to City Hall for local government exposure, and to Fire Station One for first responder education. These are just some of the unique opportunities that greatly enhance the experience from being in downtown. The proximity of LSE to downtown also contributes to the vitality of the area. LSE's presence supports local small businesses and community events, like the Mayor's Tree Lighting, for example, fostering a family-oriented, small-town atmosphere that attracts people to the district. Closing the school would sever these important ties. If the closure moves forward, it will send a troubling message to staff, parents, and the community. It could erode confidence in the district's leadership and drive families to explore alternative education options. For staff, it raises concerns about job placement and the broader stability of the district. And for community, it raises questions about whether financial motives are driving decisions more than the well-being of their students. In conclusion, I urge you to carefully consider the long-term impact of this decision. Closing LSE would have serious consequences for both the educational experience of the students and the identity of the downtown community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Brandon Nichols.
My name is Brandon Nichols. I'm here to represent the Lee Summit Elementary community. Lee Summit Elementary families have been told too much lately that their emotions are getting in the way of their judgment. So let's go with facts over feelings, because that seems what people want to hear. District leadership told LSE at a PTA meeting that they were made aware of potential enrollment issues in 2020. In 2020 to 2021, the board approved a plan to remove sixth grade from elementary schools and move them to middle school, effectively handicapping elementary enrollment. When asked what steps were taken towards fixing the potential issue, we were told that they would hope the area would re-green. In other words, they hoped it would fix itself. For almost five years, executives of LSR7 had an opportunity to do in-depth studies in ways to save a historic school and cornerstone of downtown community. 780-plus working days, 6,240 hours that all could have been utilized to help enrollment, all were wasted. The people of this community have spent hundreds of hours and dollars trying to fight to give the school a chance, significantly more than the district administration. In the November 6 meeting, the CAC was under the impression we were working to enhance nine schools in the district. They were told that night, in fact, it would only be improving six schools. Greenwood and Hazel Grove were automatically getting brand-new schools, no voting required. Lee Summit Elementary was now on the docket to be closed, and staff and students moved to Westview. We were given two weeks to sit with this information and prep for final recommendations. On the 19th of November, the CAC was given a handout from a member who was all for the closure of the school, and her voice was allowed to be heard. I was only given a handful of minutes without any preparation. A letter from Westview PTA was sent to CAC, head stating its concerns with the handling of this decision, and that was not presented to the CAC. The CAC was only given one option. When I vocalized that they should add the option to keep the school open, I was informed that option wasn't being given by the district. Forty-three votes cast, three of which belonging to members of this board. Only two votes were not cast to close LSE, mine and my wife's. While I don't fault the CAC, I do fault the district leadership for handcuffing any possible future LSE had in that meeting. The demographer that the district used stood here last time and said, people are expensive, a phrase that reeks of corporate greed and prioritizing money over people. He said that you guys have had a strong relationship built over 20 years of working together, a relationship that feels a lot like, you tell me what you need, and I'll do what you want. He also stated that you can't give 200 kids from the same education you can give 400. The problem is, the community at LSE is not the same community that is at Westview Elementary. LSE lives and breathes its downtown roots in the culture fostered in that community, full of diversity, love, and life. Downtown is losing its identity. Is it still Main Street America, or is it power and light? LSE is one of the remaining cornerstones of what downtown Lee Summit stands for. Hope for nothing more than this school is given the opportunity to survive than any other school would in this position.
Cash Sinthusi.
My name is Cash Sinthusi, and I'm a fifth grader at LSE. There are so many reasons I love being part of downtown Lee Summit and LSE. For example, every day when I get to school, all the teachers say, good morning, Cash. It makes me feel happy, and I love getting up early on the days I have choir or Play 60. And Mr. Bass makes the best bacon for the end-of-the-year choir party. I've been a LSE Cougar since kindergarten. As a Cougar, I've been in Play 60, Cougar Choir, Tooting Club, and Robotics. I really love science. For me, robotics was awesome. When I heard LSE might close and move to Westview, I asked my mom how far Westview is from our house. She looked it up and told me it is 1.6 miles from my house. On a really busy street, LSE is only 0.25 miles from my house. It made me sad to think that I would have missed out on the before-and-after-school clubs, choir, Play 60, and robotics. My mom always tells me that numbers do not tell us all of the story. You see, technically, I am a bus rider, but there are a lot of days I walk or run my bike to school for the clubs because my mom is working. I even have friends with me most times because their parents are working too. If I had to go 1.6 miles, I would have not been able to join all my clubs. I challenge LSR7 to find a other way, a better way. One will not take anything away from kids like me. We all should have the chance to be part of the different parts of elementary schools. We deserve to have a school in our neighborhood, downtown Lee Summit. Thank you.
Valerie Salazar.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Salazar. I'm a parent of two Lee Summit Elementary students. Thank you for your time and commitment to LSR7. 211 students. That's who Cash represents today. The current enrollment at Lee Summit Elementary is 211. It's a Title I school that has, December 16th, is 53.55% students of color. It's 63% students that are on free and reduced lunch. Let that set in. Forty-nine days. The length of time, the public, Lee Summit Elementary stakeholders, have known of the proposal that district leadership is proposing to close Lee Summit Elementary. Forty-nine. Twelve. Twelve minutes, length of time district administration presented their proposal to the Citizens Advisory Committee regarding the closure of Lee Summit Elementary. The CAC was not given proper information or sufficient time to make the decision to close Lee Summit Elementary. This proposal's presentation was orchestrated and manipulated by district administration, and you know that. Zero. Not one public hearing was called by district or board leadership in this timeframe, 49 days. And while grateful Dr. Shelton and Dr. Buck agreed and attend and take questions from Lee Summit Elementary stakeholders at the Lee Summit Elementary PTA meeting on November 12th, they were invited and hosted by the Lee Summit Elementary PTA. We invited them, and you know that. Five. Buck said publicly five times that he was charged nearly, or charged nearly five years ago upon his hiring to, quote, "figure out" Lee Summit Elementary, yet never once engaged Lee Summit Elementary stakeholders, the CAC, the board, to find solutions or options, and you know that. The numbers don't add up. You don't have enough information to make a decision to close Lee Summit Elementary, take us off the bond. Make that modification to bond language that process can occur and can occur tonight, and you know that. The LSE CMFP committee and other building CFMP committees always knew that it was a possibility that certain schools would not be on this bond because the need outweighs the bond, the amount of the bond. So take LSE off the bond, just like other CFMP participatory schools are not on it, Lee Summit North, Pleasantly Elementary, and so on. Don't validate district's leadership's lack of vision and strategic leadership. It's been 49 days that a community has come together to show their support for keeping LSE open. That's a number that we can't measure, the power of community. I often describe LSE the hidden gem of Lee Summit. I think you've unleashed our secret and our power. Please make this decision to take LSE off the bond.
Steve Parker.
Good evening. My name is Steve Parker. Most of you know me or have seen my wife and I here for every meeting in the last 10 years. I thank you, board, Dr. Shelton, administrators, and the public participants who have served the CAC. I believe in this district, our schools, and I've been asked to share some comments by some in the process in the CAC. We've asked for $225 million as a bond, and the CAC was only involved in half of those. Most of them were dedicated projects on the shelf, not in our prerogative. The administration has been involved in discussion and votes over our meetings, and the comments I've had from a lot of people is that they should facilitate more and participate less. Some felt that we dealt with predetermined issues and agendas, some outward, some not outward. We visited sites and did a lot of onsite things with Greenwood, Hazel Grove, Westview, LSE, and others, and all of them ended differently than we talked about in renovating them. November 5th, we got a bomb email the night before our meeting telling us we're closing LSE, and some of us felt like we wasted a lot of time and effort in this entire process. The board was blindsided, CAC, LSE, and the entire public was blindsided by this little bomb of an email. We were told that LSE was in discussions for five years, and nobody knew about it, that there were long-range plans that this district had worked on, and nobody knew about it, that a deal was made on LSE property two years ago, and nobody knew about it. All this was revealed at public meetings after the fact, and for me and a lot of others, it was damage control. We voted with omitted and incomplete information, and tonight, I'm thinking you might be doing the same thing. It delegitimized the process for a lot of us, and two of the most comments we've heard was that, one, it was a lapse of leadership and a lapse of trust. You lose trust, you lose elections. My recommendation, as I would see it right now with the board, and these are strictly for me, you need to shelve LSE until you know what you're talking about in terms of the information available, because it has not been made to you. It's the first school in our history to be closed because of decline. Think about the reasons. I would consider Prop C in the same way, as that you need to know more about what we're dealing with. I would reestablish to the public that the board is in charge and not the district because a lot of people don't know who the difference is between a dog and the tail. You need to reevaluate the CAC process. I would do it today, and every time it is used for best practices as we could improve this process in the future. I would make the same recommendation for CFMP. I would ask you to have more transparency of data, that we do not need sunshine requests for public money. It's not a private bank account. The district needs to give a formal apology to every group that has been mentioned tonight. It's been egregious for me. You need to reestablish what trust is in this community, and it's up to the board to do that. And I thank you for your time.
Lori Crone.
Good evening. My name is Lori Crone. I am a retired teacher from LSR7, and I'm a Westview Elementary community member as well. I want to start off by saying thank you to each and every one of you for taking your time to listen to me, and I know it's the Christmas holiday, and we've taken you away from your family with all this extra that's going on. My husband graduated from Lee Summit High School. My stepdaughter graduated from Lee Summit High School. My husband and I have two children together who graduated from Lee Summit High School. Our son and daughter went to Lee Summit Elementary for six months until my husband and I found our forever home three streets east of Westview Elementary. Westview was my children's home away from home. It was small, it was quaint, it was perfect for our children. They were taken care of there. I tutored and volunteered at Westview, and I was president of the PTA. Then I was hired in LSR7 at a more affluent elementary school. Later, there were questions about if I would pull my children when Westview became a Title I school. My response, no, our children are living in the real world at Westview. They need to learn to live in the real world without me. I trusted everyone at Westview to take care of my children, and they did just that. Please don't close Lee Summit Elementary to merge it with Westview. These are two very special and unique schools to our district. The proposal was rushed with changes in less than three months with little consideration for input from the direct stakeholders at LSE. After attending several meetings and gathering facts, I am trying to see the big picture and visualize the administration's plan. I hear how Hawthorne Hill and Longview will exceed projections of enrollment. I hear how large subdivisions might be going by Woodland. I heard about PRI Land's possible sale. I hear how Mason is a beautiful new remodeled building, yet it is, quote, "a hotspot" and is admin's number-one job with it and Westview and Lee Summit Elementary. Mason now has 19 acres- Mason now has nineteen acres that are in consideration for sale possibly in the future. I hear Summit Lakes will be over capacity in the future, and PLMS is the logic solution. West will exceed capacity, and those students could go to Lee Summit High School. It is reported that there are many different scenarios, and the simple solution to the problem is in front of us based on these projections. The demographer reports that many children from affluent populations are homeschooling their children, yet we are laser focused on expanding those schools in those areas. Then I heard our population is growing with younger people with forty thousand more residents if PR land is developed, but the birth rate is declining. The big word is confusion. With all due respect, one administrator in this decision-making process has been in our district two and a half years. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Donna Gordon.
Good evening. My name is Donna Gordon. I am a thirty-four-year resident of Lee Summit, and my kids both attended Lee Summit Schools graduating in twelve and thirteen. Really ever since the cost containment years during the Great Recession, I've been following the budget, and it just continues to confound me. One, it's not user-friendly. It's hard to follow. It's even difficult to even find the information on board docs. I've just been very disappointed in the level of fiscal restraint and talking about being good stewards of taxpayer dollars as the budgets just keep ballooning and ballooning. The amount of revenue that was based on a June twenty twenty-three board presentation said that local revenue was two hundred and one million, based on a document from the twenty-four, July of twenty-four, finding its committee meeting. It said that there was two hundred and fourteen and a half million, so there's been a thirteen and a half million dollar increase in one year just from the city of Lee Summit taxpayers alone. But the November board presentation is showing that you're considering asking for a Prop C waiver that would result in an additional four and a half million dollar increase in the district. District spending has grown by ninety million dollars over the last ten years from a hundred and eighty-two million in twenty thirteen, fourteen to two hundred and seventy-two million in twenty-two, twenty-three, which was a forty-nine percent increase despite enrollment being flat and the service rate declining. So my question as a taxpayer is, when is enough is enough? The portion of my tax bill that went to the district rose seven hundred and thirty-four dollars last year. Non-assessment year, it only went up thirty-six dollars this year, but a Prop C rollback would add another seventy dollars to the tax bill, assuming that there is no increase in our assessed value, which is certainly not a given in today's environment. I've just not seen the transparency, the accountability, or the effort to be fiscally responsible from SLC. And should a Prop C waiver land on my ballot in April, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have five point zero one, resident requested item. Under a new Missouri law, residents of LSR seven may ask that the board include an item on the agenda of a regular board meeting. The Board of Education has revised policy BDDB two to accommodate this new law. The board has received a quest, a request from a resident to place an item on the agenda for this evening's meeting. Under policy BDDB two, the resident is allotted three minutes to speak about the agenda item, and those comments are subject to the same standards and restrictions that apply to persons who speak during the public comment portion of board meetings. Under policy BDDB two, the board ordinarily will not discuss or act on a resident-initiated agenda item at the meeting where it is presented. It will be treated as an information-only item, but may be the subject of discussion or action at a later meeting of the board. This is done so that the board has time to reflect on the item and allow the district's administration and other members of the community time to submit their views on the topic. The resident who has asked to speak to have an item placed on the agenda for tonight's meeting is Mike McGrew. Before he speaks, I'd like to remind everyone that the same rules for speaking apply here as they do during our public comment session.
Good evening. Mike McGrew, a parent of an LSE student and a Pleasantly Middle School student. For the board's consideration, I have submitted language to you, a revision to policy BDDH dash one to allow for additional opportunities for structured public participation. This revision empowers the board to formally accept written testimony, utilize surveys and focus groups, organize community engagement meetings, and allow for oral and written testimony for any Board of Education committee such as the CAC. This policy revision is resulting from my experience of trying to interact with the board's citizen action committee. Right now, I have no means of submitting a recommendation for amending the CAC charter to the CAC, and no opportunity to submit written testimony to offer a case to save LSE. The questions of LSE status was presented as is with no opportunity for the CAC to consider our concerns with the demographic justifications for the district office's decision, no opportunity to consider four and a half million in bond money by not closing LSE, no opportunity for the CAC to consider our concerns with equity and school performance, no opportunity to consider impacts to community character and property values, no opportunity for the committee to discuss alternatives for the multimillion-dollar bond issues when they were specifically raised by a CAC member who spoke earlier this evening. I must underscore, there was an exercise to go over the merits of closing LSE, but there was literally no option before the CAC that would keep LSE open as a school without also denying Westview Elementary an opportunity to completely renovate their school. Why is this revision important? I have a document here that is so new that it's actually dated today. Tonight in Sandy Springs, Georgia, a similar story to ours is occurring right now. They're a bedroom community of a hundred thousand people, about twenty-five minutes outside their main city of Atlanta, and they are presenting their case to save their elementary school. In this document lies their reasoned case to keep their elementary school open. It outlines their case on enrollment, capacity models, facility conditions, financial impact, economic impact study, a traffic study, data analytics, recommendations, solutions, and letters of support. It's titled Case to Save Spalding. Their school is Spalding Elementary School. This is not an FAQ. This is a over a hundred pages of constructive dialogue. This is something that we could never prepare in less than fifty days. And if we were to craft this document, LSR seven, we would have no means of submitting it to a board committee. I respectfully request that you consider this revision so that we can find a comprehensive solution for LSE as a school and our district, so that we can all do the work of determining the best path forward for our school. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Buck, I do have a question. I do not see his recommended changes in board docs. So is that an item that you received?
So when he originally sent it, it was a different recommendation. It was to change the charter of CAC, and he submitted a follow-up without meeting with me to Mrs. Mert. And Mrs. Mert is not in there. It isn't. I see an attachment. It is. You hit that attachment at the bottom. It pulls it up. But that's what he submitted to us, is that attachment. Correct, Mrs. Mert?
The second page is blank, so I don't know if maybe that was the document.
No. But we're happy to get that from Mike. I'm sure he'd be happy to send it to either me, just like I said to all of you, or Linda, or to all of you directly, either way.
Okay. I was gonna say, I've received it over email, but I just want to make sure that all the board members have had an opportunity to see that. And going forward, would that be possible, maybe whenever a resident proposes an item that conversation has had with that resident, so maybe something could be put in here so that the board can anticipate what's going to be spoken about?
Yes, and if Mike, again, he had a different request when he came and visited with me. I want to honor his time, said you don't have to come back and read reviser's request. He sent what you see here to Mrs. Mert, but the document you sent, I have not seen yet, so. But we'd be happy to distribute it at any time.
Thank you.
Can it also be uploaded to board docs just so that it's part of the public record?
Joe, you okay with that? I'm sorry, did I catch you off guard there? You're okay with that? All right, he's okay with that, yes.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have board committee reports. I'll start with Dr. Johnson.
So I'm not gonna lie, I left my calendar home, and I'm trying to pull it up here electronically because I use a paper calendar. But I did attend Team Lee Summit. At Team Lee Summit, we started discussing things around compensation in our survey that goes out to all the employees to evaluate what the employer groups or different employer groups are looking for from LSR seven. And I believe that is it from the top of my memory. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Myers?
Sure. I too attended the Team Lee Summit meeting this month. I also participated in the Belcher Scholarship Committee, and we got those applications completed and that paperwork done for the year.
Thank you. Board Member Garrett?
Thank you. A couple of committees I've attended this past couple of weeks is Lee Summit Cares, and something that they are currently working on is the Mayoral Character Breakfast. That will be January sixteenth at eight AM. So they still, they have tickets available, so I do encourage everyone to help them out. They do such great work for the community, not just the community, but our school district. And so there's a lot of care there. And then, as well as I've attended, the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. And right now, they're preparing for the Taste of Lee Summit. Last year, I was able to attend, and it was pretty phenomenal. So a lot of entertainment, a lot of food. And then also, they have the silent auction, so a lot of amazing prizes or things that can be auctioned on from different supporters in the community. And then I also attended the Belcher Scholarship Committee meeting, and hopefully we'll get to hear the winner here soon, so. And that was about it.
Thank you. Board Member Miller?
So I attended the board policy meeting, and we are working through reviewing MSBA policy revisions, the E-series and the F-series. So if you're a policy person, you can go in and look at those that we're making those changes on. I also attended the Lee Summit Cares meeting, and ditto what Board Member Garrett said, but also adding to, they're really working towards focusing on mental health and substance use as well as parenting classes, just doing a lot of amazing things in the community to support the community, and also working with the district to support our families as well. And then I, along with Board Member Garrett and Board Member Myers, was on the Belcher Scholarship Committee, and so we had seventeen applicants. For me, when I read these applications, it's just a reminder of how incredible our students are. So it was a pleasure being able to learn more about some of our students, and that's all.
Thank you. Board Member Haley?
Thank you, President Foley. I joined Board Member Miller on the policy committee reviewing the MSBA policies that were provided to us by Dr. Carlson. We had a finance committee meeting earlier this week where Mr. Holder gave us an update on the mid-year budget report as he did earlier today. Our safety committee was canceled, and then I was on the CAC, and we had our last meeting on the nineteenth of November.
Thank you. Vice President Aslick?
It's a short report, finance committee meeting with Board Member Haley, and I attended our board leadership meeting. A lot of other community engagement, but those are my only two formal meetings, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. I attended the board leadership meeting, government relations, where we heard the post-federal election results and expectations from VP of Government Affairs for the US Chamber of Commerce. And then I attended the audit committee meeting earlier today, which will also be discussed later in this meeting. All right. Next up, we have seven point zero one, approving the transfer of the funds. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the transfer of four million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven point zero two, approved treasurer's report and payment of the bills. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the, sorry. Did somebody else say something? No. Okay. I move to approve the treasurer's report and the payment of the bills.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Next up is seven point zero three, approval of the audit.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four audit as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Do we, for this one, do we want to have any discussion? I know the auditor, is he still present? Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. We have motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next up. The items for decision for the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have an item for discussion. Nine point zero one, long-range facility plan.
All right. Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the comprehensive facility master plan, an overview of kind of where we've been, where we are, and some direction and guidance and recommendations on where we can go. Tonight's objective is to review the long-range facility plan. Think infrastructure, think facility, think taking care of our facilities. The impact of the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendation on long-range plan as it stands today. And then moving into the second part, to review building utilization and enrollment, and then a proposal for the Comprehensive Facility Master Plan Committee to annually review the utilization and enrollment, and then provide a report to the superintendent that then can be shared with the Board of Education. Comprehensive Facility Master Plan is a living document. It's a document that this district's had for a number of years. If you go back, you can find binders that we have. In eleven, twelve, it was a survey that went out to our building and to our community and talked about what do we want from our facilities. From that, kind of a needs assessment was done, and we moved forward with taking care of our facilities. Nineteen, in eighteen nineteen, it was a process that defined what a portrait of a graduate was, is, and then how we can define and build space to achieve that goal of building a portrait of a graduate. In twenty-two, twenty-three, it took the shape of defining what a long-term bond cycle looks like. And we'll talk about that here momentarily. Also, it talked about defining what our facility needs are, and that's where, I'll say, the large master list that the Citizens Advisory Committee considered as we went through the process this semester. And then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it will look similar to what it did in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, but also maybe consider some boundary needs as we approach, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on as well. And then moving on to thirty-two and thirty-three. And so I extended out, just so you know, this is a living document. This is a living process. This is an ongoing process that we go through to ensure that we have the facilities we need in our school district. We have some guiding documents that we use as we go through it. Board Policy FB. Board Policy FB outlines our facility planning, and it speaks to what the board expects administration to do in regards to facility planning. Eighteen nineteen, the CFMP playbook. It's a large document. It's provided to you here. And then also, I've kind of pulled out the section of that document that defines what the design concepts and frameworks were agreed to at that time. And then the executive summary from the twenty-three, twenty-four process. Now, this is where the document will, I'll say, start, if you will, from that time period because based on the decision that the Board makes either this month or next month, that that will determine then how this document then builds out because that will define what projects we do in the twenty-five bond and then what will flow from there. We have a lot of facilities, thirty-nine buildings plus, and I'll define what plus is here in just a moment. Eighteen elementaries, four middle schools, three high schools, an alternative building, Missouri Innovation Campus, aerospace hangar that's currently being constructed, early education centers, we have two of those, Miller Park, Environmental Science Building on the campus at Paradise Park. We have two what would be traditional warehouses, the former Bass House serves as somewhat of a warehouse, we store some items there, we also have some PD there. Transportation Building, Facilities Building, Administration, Administrative Building, SLC that we're in right now, and then we have the Aquatic Center. But that's not only what we have, we have these buildings, but we have acreage, we have playgrounds, we have parking, we have fields, playground equipment, soft play areas, hard play areas, stadium concession stand, backstops, fencing. Currently, I believe we have seven mobile units in the school district, so we have a lot to take care of that make up our facilities. But our facilities don't, I guess, live in a silo and all that goes with them live in a silo. We have to take care of them. And the reason I'm bringing this into it because as we talk about not only major renovations, improvements, additions, new buildings, we also think about taking care of our current facilities. And the reason that's important is because whatever we spend on maintenance and repair is maintenance we don't have for additions and major renovations or later on what I'll talk about, equipment. So when we talk about maintenance and repair, it's site work, things like asphalt and concrete, playgrounds, athletic, athletics, exterior lighting, interior flooring, casework, ceilings, safety and security, exterior doors, windows, roofs, masonry, mechanical HVAC units that we have on roofs and throughout the district, electrical, fire alarms, intercom, elevators, interior lighting, sound systems, plumbing, water heaters and fountains. All these things have to be maintained and repaired and everything that goes into maintaining, repairing our current items take away from what we can do in capital equipment, as also takes away, if you will, from what we can do with major renovations, improvements, additions and new buildings. The equipment that I mentioned, the capital equipment, the areas that we have capital equipment are facilities, library, media services, music, nutritional services, Summit Tech Academy, technology, theater, performing arts centers, transportation, the White Fleet, business, industrial tech and fax. All of these departments, all of these areas have capital equipment needs that once again take money that we then, once again, it's not available for maintenance and repair or not available for major renovations and improvements. So all of that makes up our capital expenditures. And I share that with you in regards to our long-range facility plan because there's an interplay that goes on with these areas. We mentioned earlier, Mr. Holder in our mid-year budget update, talking about the 2020 bond, we didn't allocate a lot of funds to maintenance and repair. We will have to do that in this next bond cycle to catch up for what we didn't do in the twenty cycle. That means that we have less to spend on major renovations and improvements. That's just an example. It's all connected and they play a role with one another. What also plays a role in what we're going to do in our long-range facilities plan is what we've done in the past. What we did in twenty is going to impact what we do in twenty-five and what we do in twenty-five is going to impact what we can do in thirty and so on and so on. So what was done in 2020, we did Lee Summit High School, East Trails Middle School renovations at the middle schools, Mason Elementary, Great Beginnings and STA at Paradise Park, three robotics programs and geometry construction buildings at the high schools, we did Miller Park, safety upgrades, general maintenance, roofs, mechanical, athletics. So all of that was done in 2020. How does that impact what was done in twenty-five? Because just like now, when we had a long list that we had to decide what we were going to put on the list, that means some things were left off. So in 2020, as they went through that process, they came up with the process that were recommended and that we did, but there were projects that were left off the list. Those five projects were Greenwood, Hazel Grove, Lee Summit Elementary, Pleasantly Elementary and Westview. So what happened in twenty impacts what's twenty-five because those projects then move forward. So the recommendation projects for twenty-two that we're going to do, recommended in twenty-five to thirty is Greenwood Elementary, a new build, Hazel Grove, a new build. We've talked about the Westview addition and renovation and the consolidation between Lee Summit Elementary and Westview, Pleasantly Middle School, sixth grade addition, site work there, Miller Park with an entry, guided entry, it's going to complete the work from 2020, high school, baseball, softball at two of our high schools, soccer and base, and soccer and band fields at all three high schools. And then, as I mentioned, the aerospace hangar at the airport. How many students will this impact? So using, I'll say, today's numbers, it's about thirty-one eighty. The biggest impact, at least I'm a middle, I'm sorry, Pleasantly Middle School, you can see the numbers as they lay out in this table. Why this recommendation? Why is this a recommendation that helps meet our facility needs? How does this fit into our plan? Well, Hazel Grove and Greenwood are two of our oldest buildings. They have some of the highest need. Someone mentioned earlier that we did tours of the elementaries during the CAC process and it was evident, it was evident as our committee ran through and went through these buildings, it was obvious these buildings had great need. Lee Summit Elementary and Westview, this consolidation and this renovation allows us to pour, put money into a facility and impact a larger number of students. Also, it addresses accessibility needs and issues at all three of these sites. Pleasantly Middle School, why does this recommendation fit into our overall facility plan, long-term plan? Pleasantly Middle School is our oldest middle school. It has programmatic improvements which need to occur to provide some parity within our middle school system and allows for programmatic improvements for that true teaming model that we have developed and we've set that standard at East Trails Middle School. This will provide a sixth grade pod, a seventh grade pod and an eighth grade pod. The increased capacity will also allow for future growth from the development of PRI land. And then, as I've talked about, Pleasantly Elementary not being done in twenty-five and then at this point not being recommended for, I'm sorry, not being done in twenty and then not being recommended to be done in twenty-five. There is, I'll say, from a project management standpoint, an advantage to that. We separate those two major projects on that campus. As you know, that campus, they're close together, you got Pleasantly Middle School work being done while Pleasantly Elementary is not. If both projects are going on at the same time, that does create some logistical issues. It can be done, we've talked about it, but it can be done. Why this recommendation? Once again, at Miller Park, it completes the scope of work that was set out in 2020 and the aerospace program, it helps with the programmatic improvements, that experience of having the Aerospace Academy at the airport will be a great experience for our students in that program. So, but that's not only what's happening in twenty-five and through, twenty-five through thirty. You know, we have safety and security upgrades we want to make, we have maintenance and repair, I'll talk about that in more depth here in just a moment in that timeframe, operational equipment that we need to purchase, I'll talk about that here in just a moment, land and also classroom furniture. I mentioned that, you know, when we're building out our projects, we also have to think about maintenance and repair and we also have to think about equipment because there's an interplay between all of those categories and the budget that's needed to address those needs in all three areas. So looking at... Looking at the five-year span of capital equipment needs that we expect, now, here's how this list has developed. We sat down with our department's heads, we sat down with our coordinators, we sat down with the people who need this equipment and we asked them, over the next nine to ten years, what are you going to need? And so this is the portion of that spreadsheet of that work that outlines what's needed between twenty-five and thirty. So just to give you an example, in music, in our music departments, we expect that we're going to need four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of capital money to buy the capital equipment for music in this next fiscal year. You can see what we're expecting the need in twenty-six, twenty-seven in music, that same amount, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty. My point in showing you this is so that you can see the amount of work and detail and planning that goes into this. Now, is this set in stone? Is this rock solid? You know, what I always like to say is, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're writing in pen. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're writing in pencil. In twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you know, we're doing a little bit more because we don't know what the finances are going to look like at that time. But this is what we're budgeting out as the expected need. Taking that same concept, once again, thinking, looking, thinking about the bucket of maintenance and repair, how it all plays together. We do that same work, Kyle Gorrell and his team and I, we sat down, and I'm just going to use this as an example, this is the five-year, this is 2025 to 2030, maintenance and repair. We're not talking about improvements in regards to like major improvements, we're not talking about equipment here, we're talking about maintenance and repair to buildings. So in the middle, you'll see Summit Lakes Middle School. Using them as an example, over this five-year period, we expect to spend ten point five million dollars at Summit Lakes Middle School. And in that is eight point three million dollars for a roof. In that is one point five million dollars for HVAC equipment. And you can see the other categories, asphalt, safety and security, flooring. And so I show you this just to help you understand the amount of planning that goes into not only the projects that we're doing, the major projects and the buildings that have been recommended to you to be done, but also the amount of planning that goes into the other things that interplay with those projects, maintenance and repair and equipment. And that's what's being planned between twenty-five and thirty. So, projects not being recommended for the 2025 bond. I've talked about what we did in twenty and what we didn't do in twenty and how that impacts twenty-five. So what we do in twenty-five and what we don't do in twenty-five will impact what we do in thirties. So we started out thinking about this long-range plan. These now then get teed up for 2030. So let me just pause for just a moment to say, to tell you, to tell you also that this is our next up list. In some world, maybe in 2025 bond, maybe we come up with a way that there's twenty-three million dollars available. Pleasantly Elementary School, based on what the Citizens Advisory Committee told us, would be next up. And so this is the next up list for this bond, but it's, I'll say, it's the first up list for 2030 as we think about and look forward to 2030. So, this, pardon me. This four-phase bond cycle was developed back in twenty-two, twenty-three when we were working through the CFMP process. This was presented to the Board in January of 2023. Board President Foley, Vice President Eslic, this is early, you know, your first year, my first year, this is at the January work session 2023. And so to be honest with you, this is a four-phase bond cycle. This is the district's first crack at putting together something like this. To be honest with you, it probably needs to be an eight-phase, a forty-year or maybe a ten-phase, fifty-year bond cycle. Because you can tell, we're stacking up projects. You know, we left, we brought five projects over from twenty into twenty-five. We're taking five projects or so over from twenty-five to thirty. Thirty's going to get pushed to thirty-five. And so I plan to bring to you in the coming months, probably an eight or ten phase or probably both for you to take a look at, to give us some thoughts about expanding this because we want to put together a plan that's realistic. And so a four-phase bond cycle isn't realistic for this district because of bonding capacity, limits by the state, those types of things. So probably an eight-phase, forty-year, ten-phase, fifty-year bond cycle. And what that means, it's going to take us forty or fifty years to get through the full rotation of all current thirty-nine buildings that we have in the district. So this is phases three and four, so this goes out to thirty-five and forty and I just give this to you as a point of reference. So... What impact will the 2025 projects have on the 2030 projects? Once again, wanting to give you a long-range facility plan. So as you look at what we started with, as you look, and this is what I just showed you, and the items that are in black are items that would be done with the recommendation. The items in red are items that would be forwarded onto Phase Two, onto thirty. So that's what this looks like. So assuming that the Board takes the recommendation, the CAC, and we go through with this process, we would issue, we would go to the voter for two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five million, put some of our district capital into that as well, it'd be three hundred and eleven point five million. We would, over the next five years, complete these projects. But then we start thinking about thirty because, you know, we got to take care of the day, but we got to start thinking and planning about what's coming down the road. So as I mentioned, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we would start that CFMP process again and this is the list that we would start with. To sit down and take a look at the needs of these buildings, what are the greatest needs of these buildings, what are the greatest needs of our school district? So you can see on this list, Lee Summit North, Pleasantly Elementary. Why are they important? Lee Summit North is important because at that time, in 2030, it'll be thirty-five years old. It's a project of significant magnitude. It's, you know, it's one of those projects, it's going to take up a large amount of whatever we ask the voters for. And so at some point, you got to do it and when you do it, it's going to be something that probably there's not a lot else done that year in that cycle. Pleasantly Elementary, as I mentioned, it was teed up for twenty, it was teed up for twenty-five. At this point, it will be a building that was built in the nineteen sixties. It will be sixty-five years old in 2030. It is just time. It's, the systems are, I mean, obviously we're doing work there now. We plan to do windows and doors there, whether it's on the bomb this year or not, I mentioned it was next up. By chance, if we pull it up next, that's great if we somehow come up with the money. But if we don't, we're for sure doing windows and doors there. So at that time though, it will be one of those buildings that was mentioned earlier that's on the shelf. It's, it needs to happen and we're going to come in and say it needs to happen. Also, it will help prepare us for PRI enrollment. So what would the cost of that be? You know, in today's dollars, we're looking at Lee Summit North somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifteen probably. Pleasantly Elementary, you know, we had budgeted twenty-three as we prepared, as we were preparing for us in this process. So, that aside, that's the big maintenance, I'm sorry, those are the big renovations and improvements that we would push forward in 2030. But that's not the only thing, as I mentioned, we still have needs in other areas besides major renovations and improvements. We have maintenance and repair that needs to be done, we cannot continue to defer. We need to make sure we're spending between twenty-five and... We need to make sure we're spending between twenty-five and thirty percent of any bond cycle funds on maintenance and repair to keep our current facilities up to the grade that we want them to be. We estimate, in that, that time period, about eighty-five million. So, as I showed you just a little bit ago, as I showed you just a little bit ago, the work that goes into, uh, preparing for twenty-five to thirty maintenance and repair, we're already starting to think about thirty to thirty-four. So, let's go back to our friend Summit Lakes Middle School. Summit Lakes Middle School, over that five-year period of time, we've already done the roof. We did that back in, between twenty-five and thirty, we've already done HVAC, we did that in twenty-five, thirty. There's not a lot of maintenance and repair that's gonna need to happen, big maintenance and repair, that's gonna need to happen between thirty and thirty-four, in this case, this is what this spreadsheet goes out to. So, I, I just share that with you to, once again, show you the planning that goes into the long-range planning that we do. Also, capital equipment. Once again, we ask our, we ask our coordinators, we ask our department leads, hey, get into the weeds, think about what you're gonna need down the road. You know, you're, today, you're buying this, um, let's call it a wood lathe, I'm buying a wood lathe in two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. When are you gonna need to replace that wood lathe? Oh, probably twenty, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three? It has about a nine-year life expectancy? All right, well, let's put it on the list. How much is it gonna cost? I don't know, let's add ten percent to what it is today. And so, we put that on the list, and you can see how that's laid out here. So, once again, looking at music, you can see what we've estimated, and Amy Crinkie does a great job with this, uh, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three ninety-six, three sixty-eight. Now, what goes into that? I could show you the spreadsheet, and I could, I can tell you, she, I mean, she could sit down, we could tell you exactly what makes that up. But it's just not a number that, that, that is pulled out of thin air. So, something unique that we need to think about for thirty to thirty-five. Um, as Mr. Holder mentioned earlier in the budget update during the work session, uh, there are some, there are some departments that take up a lot of capital expenses. Technology happens to be one of them. They're taking up about eighteen million between twenty-five and thirty. We estimate between thirty and thirty-five, they're gonna take up about twelve million. They're gonna be doing things, uh, with the firewalls, phone systems, domain controllers, USPs, backups. So, we know we got a, a lot of expenses coming out of technology that's gonna drain down and pull down our capital. And this is a ten-year span of, of, of transportation, once again, Mr. Holder mentioned transportation. For those of you who are around in, I'll say between two thousand ten and two thousand eighteen, we bought a lot of buses. We bought a lot of buses in a very short amount of time. We have fifty-six C and G buses that were purchased either two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen. We have thirty diesel buses that were purchased two thousand seventeen, nineteen, twenty-eight Lyft buses in twelve or fourteen. Hundred and fourteen buses that, that will need to be replaced during the next ten years. Purchase schedule forty buses and, uh, you know, we're, we're scheduled, we're, we're planning to purchase forty buses in twenty-five to thirty. That's what we're planning to do, over that five-year period of time. We're gonna need to buy seventy-five buses between thirty and thirty-five. That's nineteen point four million dollars of capital money that we're not gonna have available to do a building, or to do maintenance and repair. So, I just wanna take a second. We've been fortunate over the last few years in our state, that our state has fully funded transportation. Their first priority, our, our legislators and our governor's first priority is typically to fund the formula first. Wanna fund the formula, and if they've got enough money, they'll fund transportation. So, in the future, if they ever can, and, and Senate Bill seven twenty-seven, getting to some weeds in some different areas, seven twenty-seven is, is an eight-hundred-million-dollar expense to the, the dis, not to the district, to the state, that we're not sure is gonna be funded. And if they can't fund it fully, they're gonna pull from transportation to try to fund it. That means we won't have funds, additional transportation funds, to make this expense. So, this expense is gonna have to come from somewhere, because replacing these buses will not be, it won't be an option, because they're at end of life, those tanks and the C and G buses, at twenty years, legally, we have to stop using them. So, the CAC, the CAC recommendation, Citizen Advisory Committee's recommendation allows the, for the district to address the most need for the most students with the available resources. Additionally, it will allow the district to address prioritized needs and deferred maintenance and equipment needs in two thousand thirty. So, doing, doing, uh, now, two thousand twenty-five, what's being recommended, both major renovations and improvements that's been outlined by the CAC, the seventy-three million set aside for maintenance and repair, the forty million for equipment, will allow, doing that in twenty-five will allow us to do what we need to do in thirty, which I'm gonna recommend is gonna be Lee Summit North and Pleasantly Elementary, and that's gonna probably eat up all the bond, major renovation and improvement funds. Because we're gonna have capital, we're gonna have capital needs in other areas that bond funds are gonna have to pay for, maintenance and repair, equipment, like, technology and buses. So, long-range facility plan, I'm gonna, that's the infrastructure side of it, that's the, the building, taking care of the concrete, keeping things warm, safe, and dry, that's, that's what that's about. I'm, I'm gonna talk about enrollment and utilization here in just a moment, but I wanna stop there and see if you have any questions.
Board Member Eslick? Thank you. Um, Dr. Shelton, we've probably had these conversations before, but I'm gonna ask these questions really for the benefit of the board and the public that hasn't been engaged when we've talked about these sorts of things. Can you talk through why we use bond funds for capital needs, um, instead of just money from our capital fund? Aside from the fact that we don't have the money there, but can you just talk through a little bit of that?
Well, to be honest with you, that's pretty simple, ex, exactly what you said, we can't get enough of our revenue into our capital budget. You know, we put a nickel of our levy into it, we, as Mr. Holder mentioned, we put our M and M, we do a transfer from, um, Fund One, our general, uh, fund into, into capital, but we just can't get enough in there, and continue to do the other things we wanna do on the operational side of the house. Eighty-five percent, eighty to eighty-five percent of our, of our, uh, funds are spent on, on our people, on our teachers, on our counselors, on our library media specialists, on our bus drivers. All the great folks we have, that's been, you know, we referenced earlier, all the great people we have in our school district that serve our students. And so, it, it, it just makes it difficult to get enough of our funds out of, or operating into our, into our capital budget.
Thank you. So, we effectively borrow money and pay interest on that money to maintain the facilities that we have right now, is that right?
I will tell you, you know, with, minus the bond, minus bond funds, um, the, I don't, I don't believe that we could generate enough money in our capital budget to take care of all of our maintenance and repair needs. And we're not talking about doing fancy stuff, we're just talking about warm, safe, and dry.
But we can transfer money from our debt levy to our operating and allocate more money than five cents to our capital and avoid having to pay interest on things that would, we would consider just general maintenance needs.
The problem with that, and I, and I, you know, we've played with the, you know, those levies in that way, but the problem with that is that it's subject to the Hancock Amendment, then. It's not, you know, we, we put that hypothetically, let's say we take a nickel, take a nickel of eighty, of that eighty-seven, um, and it goes, you know, goes down to eighty-two, and now we've got ten cents in our, um, in our capital. It's, it's subject to Hancock Amendment, all of a sudden, that ten cents is eight cents, and that eight cents is five cents. And then, all of a sudden, we're going to the voter and say, hey, we need, we need an increase in our, in our tax levy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
In the conversations with the CFMP groups, um, when going through, because that's, that's how we establish the plans for the, the cost for each of the, the projects that would potentially be on the bond, right? So, the, the CFMP groups,
Yes.
they decided, this is what we want for our school, and so that is what then came on the list, that was then narrowed down for the bond recommendation, right?
So, if I think I've understood your question correctly, the, so the CFMP, the work groups, the building, the building work groups, um, went through a process to identify their priorities, what priorities they have in their, their buildings. And then, from those priorities, we estimated the cost to, to address those priorities. And that's where, so, like, Pleasantly Elementary, um, twenty-three, twenty-three million dollars. It was based on what they identified as the priorities, as well as the district standards that we have, have set for design that I mentioned back from the eighteen, nineteen process.
So, were the, the associated costs, were those discussed with those groups when they were making these decisions and recommendations? Or were they just talking about, we would like to see this, we would like to see that, with no numbers involved?
Eventually, we got to the numbers with them. So, so, back in, back in twenty-two, twenty-three, we got, we got to the numbers with them, you know, after, it, it was a, they had maybe three, four, five meetings, we went through that process. Eventually, they, they saw the numbers for, for their buildings. Now, one, one thing, you know, that came out of that process was, we asked, if you can't, if we don't have enough money to do everything, would you rather us not do it, or, 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 or shrink the scope of it? And they, everyone said, if you're gonna do it, do it. If you're gonna come in, do the work in the building, complete the task, and so, that's, that's what we went with. We went with, okay, if this is what it's gonna take to fully renovate, fully improve this facility, this is what it's gonna take. Now, could, could we, can you carve it out? You can, you can say, okay, hey, we're gonna, I'll give you an example, Pleasantly Middle School's a little bit like that. I mean, that, that process was, okay, we can do the ath, we can do the athletic side of the, of, of the building, or we can do the academic side of the building. And talking with Brian Lindquist, he said, let's, well, obviously, we're gonna do the academic side. But, but when we go in there and do the academic side, we're gonna, we're gonna do it.
Thank you. Board Member Myers?
Yeah, thank you, would you like some more hydration?
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, so, what I'm kind of hearing, there's, there's like two sides to this CFMP, right? We want people to, like, go big, we wanted, you know, really, if money's no object, what can we do? Right? And then, it whittles itself down to what's practical, and it seems like, for some that have been a little upset with us in process, they thought that perhaps, um, you know, they spent a lot of time dreaming up big things that, uh, they put a lot of time and energy and effort and perhaps heart into, that then, later, we're like, well, there's just no way we can do that. Um, and, and again, the challenge, when you're brainstorming, right, is you want those big ideas, because it's out of those big ideas that you continue to move forward as a, as a system, and continue to improve what we have available, not only in our buildings, but in our instructional tools and, and things of this nature. So, it's kind of a catch-22, when you open up that huge brainstorm.
So, you're right, we start with, we do start, we do, we do start with the process, uh, the idea, hey, dream big, what, what can we do here? And then, I mean, and then at some point, we, you know, we do, you do whittle it down, and we do, we do that in our personal lives, we do that, you know, in this work as well. Um, so, we do whittle it down. Now, what, what's, what's unique about secondary buildings, and you saw this, we saw it as we went through this semester, you know, Lisa, it was obvious, Lee Summit North could not move forward in this process at a hundred million dollars, and anybody get anything else done. And so, you know, we want, we went to Dr. Collins and said, and, and, um, said, okay, what, what can we do, and, and still make, meet that mentality of, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. And so, you can, in this case, section off a wing of a building, and at a, at a high school, and, and really do something special. Now, in, in regards to an elementary, that, you know, the footprint's so small. And so, you can do, you, you know, if you go in there, um, if you go into an elementary, you just pretty much have to go and do it all.
Board Member Johnson?
So, so if I'm understanding you correctly, and I'm thinking about, you know, my own finances and how I manage my mortgage and everything like that, if I don't have enough money in my bank account, and I don't get a bond, then, then is the other option, I'd have to ask for a tax increase? I'd have to ask for taxpayers to divvy up more money, is that the other option?
No, so, so if we didn't, you know, so if we didn't have the bond, and we didn't have enough money in capital, um, I mean, there, there are some other options, there are lease purchases, you know, that, that's an option. Um, it's, it's like, it's like a bond, it's like a loan, if you will. And then, you pay it back out of, out of future capital over time, typically fifteen years. Um, it depends on the size of the need, you know? Could, could we figure out a way, as Dr. Mr. Holder mentioned earlier, to do a larger transfer from Fund One into Fund Four? Uh, next year, we put a, we put eight cents rather than a nickel, it, it just depends on the amount of need that you would have.
Okay, I guess, and what I'm getting at is, if I don't have the money to transfer, and I don't have a bond, where else does the district get the money from?
Uh, it would have to be lease purchases, or just not do it. Mr. Holder, is there some other revenue source that you can think of?
Or taxes.
Or, or, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, you could go back to the voters, you could go to the voters and ask for a levy increase. And, and a levy increase specifically for, um, to put into the capital, capital, uh, budget.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Um, so, I understand that the, the groups were encouraged to dream big, and then you kind of started to whittle things down. But did it ever enter the conversation to consider the other schools that were also affected, knowing that potentially some might not make the bond cut list? If this particular school maybe had a higher budget? You know, were they, were they essentially thinking about the others when they were thinking about themselves? Or did everybody just kind of go in isolation, looking at their own building?
Yeah, we asked them to focus solely on their building. Now, I will tell you, at, there was a point, um, I don't know if it was the last CFMP meeting, but we, we brought all nine buildings into the, uh, into the cafeteria, at Lee Summit Elementary, and they all shared, you know, what their proposals, what their, what their priorities were, and what the cost was gonna be. And so, at some point, we had everybody in the same room, and they all saw, they all saw what was, what was being proposed and on the table.
But there couldn't have been an opportunity where they looked around and maybe said, well, hey, I'll trim, I'll trim a million or two, you trim a million or two, you trim a million or two, and now we can afford to add one more school to the bond?
We never asked that question, no.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, building utilization and enrollment. Um, so, facility utilization, the district uses two major data points to evaluate facility utilization, the current and projected enrollment, and then building, build, program capacity and projected program capacity. So, individually and collectively, they may signal the need to make a change. So, the thresholds that we, we use and we look at, um, if the building's program utilization is at ninety-five percent or higher, ninety to ninety-five, eighty to eight, eighty to ninety, that's, to be, and that's, that's where we like our buildings. We like our buildings in that eighty to ninety percent utilization range, seventy to eighty, and then seventy or lower. On the enrollment side, on the upper end, on the upper end, it's, it's a, uh, it's about actual and projected utilization, how, how full is the, because we it's about actual and projected utilization, how, how full is the, because we have, we have buildings of different sizes. Prairie View Elementary full is different than Lisa Summit Elementary full, you know, our smallest building and our largest building. Uh, or Lisa Summit High School. How, how full is full there? At what utilization? So, and then on the lower end, anytime a building gets to that two-hundred student number, it, it's, it's just a trigger, it's, it's a, it's a threshold to start asking questions. So, same thing here with the secondary programs, and once again, those same levels on utilization. Uh, and but on the enrollment side, it's once again, at what point? Does it, you know, if, if a secondary building gets to ninety-five percent utilization, you know, we need to start talking about doing something. If it gets below seventy percent, we need to start talking about doing something. All right, so, you know, the question about enrollment, you know, two-hundred, why two-hundred? Why is that a number that gets folks' attention? Well, to be honest with you, I'll, I'll come back to the slide. Yeah, this is the slide, I'm sorry. So, you can see that at, at two-hundred, this is where we start, where the, where the state says, where the state says, you can, that its counseling services would go to four days a week rather than five days a week. Doesn't, doesn't mean you have to do it. But the state says that's the, that's a ratio, that's a level, that's an enrollment number where you can, where you would have in counseling services four days a week. Library media services, you know, at two-hundred, you can see that library media services should be around one to two days a week. So librarian in the building, one to two days a week. And then, these are the teacher ratios, student-to-teacher ratios, based on, on grade level. So, but the reason two-hundred starts to be an enrollment level where you start to ask the question, are, are we going to, if, if enrollment continues to decline, are we going to be able to continue to provide full services every day of the week? So, let's talk about program capacity. I want you to, just real quick, I want to remind you of our color coding. Anything above ninety-five percent is in red. Oh, I'm, and I'm sorry, thank, thank you, I'm glad you're holding it. You have one of these at your table, all right? At your desk, at your, at your place. Anything that's between ninety and ninety-five percent is in yellow. Anything in the eighties is in the green, anything in seventies is in the blue, and anything below seventies is, is in the gray. So, we're looking for trends, we're looking for prolonged, projected, either prolonged, established, actual numbers, or prolonged, projected, or the combination of both. So, I want to, I want to highlight Long, Longview Farm in this model. Longview Farm, back in twenty-two, twenty-three, had four-hundred-and-eight students. Longview Farm in twenty-three, twenty-four, had four-hundred-and-five students. Longview Farm in twenty-four, twenty-five, this year has four-hundred students. Actual numbers, students in building. That's a sixty-two percent utilization. So, I want you to think about it through thresholds here. The two-hundred threshold, they're double, they're double that number. So from, just from a staffing standpoint, we know they're gonna have full staff, full services, every day of the week. But from a building standpoint, are they fully utilizing that building? They're not. Sixty-two percent capacity today. What are they projected to do? They're, they're projected to grow in the next five years to five-fourteen, and then another five years, six-hundred-and-fifty-one. Now, here's what I will tell you. What should we do? We should monitor this, we should watch this. But there's no actionable item here. There's nothing to do. And when I talk about an actionable item, I'm talking about something that needs to be done in the next two to three years. So, let's take Mason Elementary as an example. Mason, four-hundred-and-eighty-five, five-oh-five, five-twelve at ninety-two-point-eight percent capacity. We have an established increase in enrollment, we have a building that's at ninety-two-point-eight percent capacity. We need to do something, this is an actionable item. And what is that action? It needs to happen over the next two to three years. But in the next five years, they're projected to be at five-eighty-three, what's gonna happen out there? They're building. If you're driving out there, you can see the houses going up, you can see the, the, it's happening. And so, that tells me that that enrollment's probably coming. And so, to be proactive, we're probably gonna bring a proposal to you to put a couple of mo, one or two mobile units out there, which would be two or four classrooms, that would allow us to have a little bit of breathing room and a little bit of time to get ready for what we need to do there. And what is that? We need to have a conversation about that. Maybe that's moving a boundary, maybe that's an addition, maybe, I don't know, we need to have that conversation. So, that's an example. You know, here's the middle schools, you can see Bernard Campbell, a thousand sixty-seven, a thousand sixty-four, a thousand thirty-six. That's pretty stable, they're at eighty-six-point-three percent capacity. That's about where we want Bernard Campbell to be. Thousand eighty-four in five years, okay, they're at ninety-two, ninety, ninety percent capacity. That's all those Mason kids working their way through the system. Right, they're coming in, they've, they've, they've left Mason, and now they're at Bernard Campbell. But you see, they drop. But, so what are we gonna do with that? We're just gonna monitor that, we're just gonna watch that. Because if that one-eighty-four looks like it's gonna be, you know, eleven-hundred, then we better, we better start thinking about doing something. And what's that gonna be? I don't know. A middle school, it's different than an elementary, you've got more space, you've got more rooms, you have more options. I want to highlight this because it's, it's such a drastic thing. Lisa Summit West, you know, they're at nineteen-ninety-five, they're at nineteen-twenty-nine, they're at nineteen-sixty-two, they're at eighty-two percent capacity. That's a pretty nice spot for them to be in, but then five years, they're projected to be at twenty-one-fifty-three. That's based on, that's based on projected growth from PRI. Now, the thing about PRI is that there hasn't been one acre ground sold yet. There hasn't been one lick of dirt moved, not one sewer pipe, water line laid, not one house, not one foundation, not one road poured. And so, in the next five years, are we expecting to see a big? Well, by this projection, yes, but it's wait and see. Now, in two, three years, all of a sudden, if they go from nineteen-sixty-two to two thousand and twenty, then we, we probably ought to start having a conversation, because especially if houses are going up and we're starting to see it coming. Who knows how quickly that's gonna develop? And I just provided you a copy of the boundary map, just so you would have it. I've included in this, this presentation. So, possible responses. When hi, when hike, when, when there's high program capacity, we would lean on board policy FJ first. That is temporary buildings, I mentioned mobile units, that's a typical response. There are others, other options within that, within that policy. Uh, also, establishing, if you have established and projected lo, full-capacity buildings, additions or new buildings, adjust boundary lines, those are all alternative, long-term alternatives to overcapacity. What if it's low program capacity or low enrollment? Well, first and foremost, you monitor it, you watch it. Uh, and then, if it's established and prolonged, you develop an actionable item. And I know we're gonna talk a little bit later on about a five- and ten-year plan. And those five- and ten-years plans are gonna be great. But really, what's actionable is the next two or three years. The next two or three years is what we need to think about. I see it happening. We see it happening, we've seen it happening in the last two or three years, and everything indicates whatever is occurring, whether it's going up or going down, is going to continue. And if that's the case, then we need to have a plan. What's gonna happen the next two or three years? So here are some examples. And we've talked about Lisa Summit Elementary in Westview, Mason, we've talked about Lisa, we've talked about Mason. Here's, here are two that I, that we haven't talked about, and they're a little unique. Let's look at Cedar Creek. Five-oh-six, four-sixty-five, four-eighty-eight, pretty stable enrollment, eighty-six percent capacity. That's where we like it, they're in a pretty sweet spot. Four-ninety-five, projected to be. Uh, four-sixty-three. Everything about Cedar Creek looks great. Why would we do anything there? We would do something there because there, they house a number of sped, specialist education programs. Those programs take up a lot of space, they bring a lot of adults with them, OT, PT, therapists. It take up a lot of space. And so, that eighty-six to eighty-two percent capacity at Cedar Creek is different than a building that doesn't house those programs. And so we need to do something there. We have been monitoring this, we have been working with the principal there, we have walked through that building. Uh, Kyle Gurrell and I, and, and Stacy Mathis have gone through with the map, along with the principal and the assistant principal, and we've found every little spot we could to put a person. We're at, we're at this, we've ran out of little spots. And so we're gonna come to you, just like with Mason likely, and ask for you to approve putting a mobile unit there to give us some more space, to give us some breathing. And the same thing, likely at Richardson, we have another final walkthrough at Richardson that, that needs to be done. So here are examples with thresholds just to monitor. So the, these are actionable, these, these four buildings, in my opinion, are actionable to do something in the next two to three years. Pro, buildings, and these are examples, and this is not an exhaustive list, but examples and thresholds to monitor. Hawthorne Hill, projected to exceed capacity. Right now, though, they're at four-hundred-and-forty-three enrollment, but that enrollment is increasing. So, that is, that is a place for us to watch. Longview Farm, I talked about Longview Farm. Highland Park, low and trending-down capacity. They have four-hundred-and-five students, though. So we have a full staff, full services, but their capacity is starting to, to go down and trending down. Meadow Lane, low and trending-down capacity, four-hundred-and-thirty students. But that four-hundred-and-thirty students is also declining in enrollment. Pleasantly, low and trending-down capacity, four-hundred-and-thirty-five enrollment. Stable, declining enrollment, it kind of goes up and down a little bit. Sunset Valley, low and trending-down capacity, three-hundred-and-nine students, but it's stable. It's stable and projected to be fairly stable. So, these are examples of where we would monitor enrollment and monitor building utilization. And then if something indicates in time, we would bring forward an actionable plan that would probably need to be done in the next two or three years. So, factors to consider, these are things I just want to, you know, we've talked about PRI and SLR, you know, it, it is, it is gonna have a big impact on this district. The question is when? The group that currently owns the land, uh, they don't move fast. They don't move fast. So, we'll see, we'll see what happens with PRI and SLR. I will tell you, we are doing everything we can to prepare and be good, be responsible for long-term planning, you know, in the event that that fully develops, and we have thirty thousand new residents in that area. Discovery Park, the northeast and southeast corners of our district, I mentioned the Mason attendance area, but we also have the Woodland attendance area, Bailey Farm by Sun, by Sunset Valley Elementary. You know, what impact is that gonna have on Sunset Valley? I mentioned just a little bit ago where they are with their utilization. They also house a program that takes up a lot of real estate and has a lot of people. Um, and the other thing I want to mention is Senate Bill one-ninety, Jackson County Senior Property Tax Credit Program. What impact is this gonna have on our senior citizens staying in their home longer? You know, you get your property, you get your property tax liability set, you're, all of a sudden, your liability is someone who's sixty-two and older, and then you know it's not gonna go up? You might hang on to your house longer. And if you're hanging on to your house longer, that means a family is not coming in behind you with kids. And so, don't know yet, this is really early, this is the baseline year. We'll see how many folks sign up, and we'll see what the impact is over time. That won't be determined in regards to how it impacts enrollment, probably for, for years. So here's the recommendation. The recommendation is that we amend Board Policy FB. I wish I could make this bigger. Board Policy FB. Board Policy FB is our facilities planning, it outlines what, um, uh, what the board expects from administration in regards to facility planning. We would like to make the recommendation that the, as I mentioned at the very first of our presentation, that the Comprehensive Facility Master Plan Team Committee, they meet annually. My estimation, it would be January. The reason I say January, enrollment data comes in both at the end of September. Also, we have better numbers as we go through the semester. We'll have building utilization, the, the demographic study typically comes back in November. That will give us a little bit of time for semester to get the demographic study done, um, as well as get the enrollment and utilization done. And then we can convene this group in January to study building utilization, enrollment numbers, both historical and projected, as well as look at the demographic study, and then bring forward a report to the superintendent. What questions do you have?
In reviewing the numbers for Mason Elementary, can you speak a little bit to why we did expansive renovations without considering expansion, knowing that there was gonna be an increase in population in that area?
So our, back in eighteen-nineteen, it was determined that, one, sixth grade was going to middle school, and that we would have four-section elementaries. So, four-section elementaries is twenty-four classrooms. And so if you go to Mason Elementary, they have twenty-four classrooms. So, it, it just, it was, it was the standard that the district set and has set. And the buildings with, you know, if Hazel Grove and Greenwood are approved, and the voters pass the bond, and we build Greenwood and Hazel Grove, new buildings, there'll be four-section elementaries with twenty-four buildings. Now, we've talked about, uh, Board Member Essex talked about, you know, making sure that we lay out the site and the building so that if we had to add on, and make an addition, to make it a twenty-eight, uh, you may, I guess, almost like a five-section, it's not really. But add four classrooms, add six classrooms, we could do that. Uh, so we'll, we'll lay out the building and lay out the site so that we can make additions, uh, if needed in the future. But, it was, it was established in eighteen-nineteen that we would have four-section, have four-section buildings.
Okay. And then in regards to Greenwood Elementary, um, I know when we toured the, the space, um, it was under capacity due to some unusable space. Like there was an upstairs area that's difficult to access, and there's a lack of restroom facilities. So, how is that reflected or examined when you're looking across the district? Because that is not something that you would infer from any of these numbers that are on these charts.
So, um, are you talking about like accessibility?
That, or there's space in buildings that can't be used. So maybe it's not that there's declining enrollment, but that the physical space is there, but it is not usable by students.
So we would, you know, if, if there becomes space in a building that So we would, you know, if, if there becomes space in a building that can't be used for classroom space, we would remove that from the calculation. So again, the event, I think what, there are two or three, four, maybe four classrooms upstairs at Greenwood Elementary. And I have to go back and take a look at the calculation, but if there are classrooms that aren't, that can't be used as classrooms, um, then we would remove that from the calculation of the utilization report. Now, would we use that space for maybe office space or some other purpose? Definitely. But if, if there are portions of our building that can't be used for a classroom, now I will tell you, 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 you might go to one of these buildings, uh, one of our elementary buildings that has, I'll say, low capacity, anything under seventy percent, and there may be a classroom that's open, but we're counting that. And they may be using it for office space, um, for some purpose. So my, my point is this, if it can be used as a classroom, it's counted in the calculation for utilization.
So for Greenwood, do you know if that upstairs space was included in that calculation?
I'll need to go back and take a look at the spreadsheet. It's been, it's been a while since I, I looked at those formulas for that particular.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I will give you that information. I'll have to see if it's used.
Vice President Eslic?
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of questions about the recommendation for, um, the revision to policy. Um, I think it's a great, great idea. I'm just curious with regard to the written report, do you envision that including recommendations on like, um, this needs to happen now, this needs to happen in this number of years, kind of like a phased-out recommendation structure?
Yes, I, I do, I do. I would, I would hope that the report would, uh, provide a finding of the study that's done by looking at, uh, the numbers that I, in the, the data that I described, as well as there's other data. You know, as you know, you've seen the demographic data study. It has a lot of data in there, besides enrollment and utilization. But, um, yes, I could, the finding of, the findings of the review of the data, then the recommendation based on that. And once again, it's my belief that really actionable items are two or three years out, and you can make projections for five or ten. I just, from my experience, five and ten gets really fuzzy. But two or three, if, if there's an established pattern, if there's an established pattern of enrollment, established pattern of utilization, and projections that are based on current activity, whatever that may be, buildings going up, uh, or, or something else, if it's, if it's very clear that something's happening that needs to be changed, I'd say that two or three-year window is, is, is the two, is the window.
Okay. What do you need from the board with regard to this recommendation? Is this something the administration would revise, try to revise, revise policy and bring to the board committee, Board Policy Committee?
Yes, as was mentioned earlier, uh, the Policy Review Committee met this week, uh, and, uh, Mr. Gorel couldn't be there, I was there, but, but he provided a lot of input. But anyway, we provided, uh, in the F-series, the F-series, which is the facility series, uh, in our board policy was covered. So we covered all the facility policies. We covered this, and we've made this recommendation to the Policy Review Committee. Um, we have, um, gone through an initial vetting with them. We've taken it to the, to the Superintendent's Leadership Team. We have vetted it there. We have proposed language now, and that proposed language is, will be taken back to the Policy Review Committee, uh, for review, and then determination as to where to go from there.
Okay, thank you. Um, just one more, just really logistics question. This presentation that you've shared with everybody here is an administrative content. Is there a way to make this public so that everyone else would be able to have access?
Mrs. Ismer usually does during the meeting. When it starts, she moves it back up, and she may have already done that, I don't know, so she hasn't done it yet. So, uh, it will be, that's typical, we have presentations given to us, we move it up to public during the meeting or right afterwards.
Understood, thank you.
Board Member Myers?
Just real briefly, Dr. Shelton, I would like to thank you for, uh, taking the time and, uh, putting the energy and the effort to, to making this presentation as absolutely thorough as humanly possible in terms of where we think we are and where we think we're going with as much as we can be hopefully sure about. I appreciate, um, I, I just appreciate the time and attention that I know had to have gone into this presentation, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have item ten point zero one. Resolution placing conditions on issuance and use of certain bonds. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the resolution placing conditions on issuance and use of certain bonds as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and second, third discussion. Vice President Eslic?
Thank you. Um, I actually just wanted to make a couple of statements before the board, um, has some dialogue on this. Um, so just first of all, for the public who has not had a chance to review this resolution or does not know what this is about, um, this resolution is a, somewhat of a compromise for, um, the board, for the community, and, um, for the district to be able to move our bond projects forward. Um, after our December fifth work session, um, we deliberated for a number of hours and had a lot of dialogue about the bond specific, specifically having to do with Lee Summit Elementary in Westview. Um, and we had a range of considerations and board members who were in very different positions, some fully supportive of the CAC recommendation as presented, and some board members with a lot of concerns about not having enough information regarding Lee Summit Elementary in Westview to make a decision. So, um, I left that work session very concerned about being able to find consensus amongst the board, to be able to move, uh, a bond recommendation forward that didn't result in splitting the bond. So about a week ago, little, excuse me, a little over a week ago, um, in conversations with Board President Foley, I had the idea to come up with a resolution that clarified to the administration and to the community, um, our intent as a board on what to do with Lee Summit Elementary in Westview. The recommendation, um, set forth in this resolution is to essentially withhold approved bond funds, um, and not sell the bonds at all until a community engagement and strategic plan, uh, process is conducted, um, that involves stakeholders across the Lee Summit Elementary, Westview attendance areas, parents, um, community members, staff, everyone, um, who is impacted and has a stake in what happens to that school. Um, and so that was the genesis of where the resolution idea came from, was to bridge the divide for the board, the community, and provide direction and accountability to our district administration to do more due diligence before the board approves a closure, consolidation, or any action with Lee Summit Elementary in Westview. Unfortunately, it was not very timely, and, um, to my fellow board members, I just, I do want to apologize that you did not receive it faster. Um, by the time I came up with this thought, drafted a resolution, presented it to Dr. Buck and had conversations with him, um, it was Monday before it ever made it to, this Monday, as in four days ago, before it ever made it to, um, my fellow board members, which was six days after the conversation to have this idea in the first place. And I realize that's a short timeline. We only had our work session two weeks ago. Um, unfortunately, this entire process has put, um, the board and the community in a very short time window, and this was my attempt to try and, um, bring us forward, not cost, uh, the community and other buildings and other projects, um, the resources that they need. Because in reality, Lee Summit Elementary in Westview still need work, even if it's not in regards to a consolidation. Um, so again, I acknowledge the short timeline, and, um, I do apologize to my fellow board members for that, but truly, this was a good faith effort, um, to compromise for the betterment of the district and to acknowledge and incorporate the voices of our community, um, who have been very passionately communicating, um, their desires to us as the board. So, um, that's all I want to say, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion at this time? Board Member Johnson?
Okay, thank you. So, um, yes, very short timeline, but thank you for your explanation of that. I, um, do have some questions about the wording in the resolution itself. My first question is, uh, when we talk about there being a comprehensive review, is there a certain criteria or is there a bullet point list of what we're looking for in this review? Because from what I have received, it, what I've received seems comprehensive. What is it that we're missing that we want to see from this committee?
Um, I, I could just speak for myself, but, um, I, I would like to see that there has been engagement with the community and give the community the opportunity, um, to have their voices heard on what happens to their school and consider other options, um, aside from just consolidation. Um, Dr. Shelton talked about, uh, the CFMP strategic plan and a long-term plan that evaluates the entire district. I look forward to seeing more information on, on that. Um, we just now received some of that information, I mean, tonight. So it's just a very condensed timeline for me. So for me, a big part of the ask in the resolution is to have the opportunity for the community to be part of the process.
So speaking of the community and there being a committee, how is this committee that was proposed to be formed going to be different from the input received from CAC and CFMP combined?
Um, well, CFMP was not convened through Lee Summit Elementary to consider closure. CFMP for Lee Summit Elementary was asked to evaluate what they would want to see changed in their school and what they would want to see improved. So I don't think that the intent was really communicated in the same way that it would be if we're talking about addressing an enrollment concern and what to do with, um, with that issue. So it wouldn't necessarily be geared toward how to improve the facility, but what to do about the enrollment issue and what the options would be, and for them to be part of that. Um, with regard to the CAC, um, I mean, they did not consider this course of action for very long. It was brought in at the very end of the process, and the option was either close and consolidate Lee Summit Elementary or leave it out of the bond. There wasn't even conversation about other options.
But within the district, there were considerations, there were thoughts, and this was presented. And so the CAC deemed that with all of the, with everything that they were given, and I believe that these voices would speak up and speak out about things that would be harmful to the students, that they did consider this. I just, I don't know how forming another committee is going to change the charge of what's going to happen here, besides give more time. I understand giving more time, but it's now another committee. And so what about the credit that should be given to the CAC? And even though the CFMP did not consider other things, these are committees that involve community members, these are committees that involve stakeholders. So I'm just wondering how this stakeholder, besides giving more time, how this stakeholder committee is going to be different?
I'm not part of the CAC, so I can't really speak to how that process went when it came to Lee Summit Elementary, so I will have to defer to our board members who are actually part of that committee.
So I will, I can speak a little bit to that. Uh, so they were given a, a short presentation about the option and why the administration was bringing forward the recommendation, but when it came time to actually place a vote, um, there was not an option to leave LSE open, it was only the consolidation option. Um, so in the meeting, the committee was informed that the administration brought the recommendation and that we should honor it.
So as we have board members on the committee, if we saw it okay for that to happen then, to just tell the people they have to vote on this and not consider other options, what's the change now? Like, there were people representing the board on the, in the CAC?
Can I speak to that? Let me just say, we were given zero options on the CAC. I was on the CAC. We probably spent all of forty-five minutes deliberating on how we're going to deal with Lee Summit Elementary. There were no other options available. So the idea that we need to honor the recommendation of the CAC based on what they had to work with, in my opinion, is, is a flawed premise, because this bomb was dropped on the CAC by the administration at the eleventh hour, and they were not given any guidance at all except close Lee Summit Elementary or consolidate.
They were, so all of you received the recommendation. Why at that time was it not stated to not maybe move forward with this if we feel like as board members, they were not given enough time? And using the word bomb, I think that's inflammatory, but using that to say this was just dropped on them. If we think that the CAC was not handled properly, why did we wait till after? The recommendation was done.
The CAC was not given any options.
I'm asking us as board members, why did we not intervene if we thought that this was not happening properly?
I didn't know there was a mechanism to intervene.
Yes, in, in, in that moment when, uh, people were very emotional about the things that were brought to them and the decisions that they were being potentially asked to face, that was not the time to challenge the structure of the whole entire CAC process to challenge administration, knowing especially that we as board members will have the ultimate say and we can have these conversations later, and we don't have to follow the recommendation that is provided by this committee. We will always consider it, and we appreciate the time and efforts that are placed on that, but ultimately, that's not the time to, to challenge administrators if we're not going to be in agreement with what they are presenting in that moment.
Well, I'm not speaking about challenging the administrators in that moment. There was more than one meeting that the CAC had about this, is that correct?
No, we had one meeting, one.
There was two.
One, the first meeting was just making us aware of it. We had one work session basically to deal with it.
So we had a session to make you aware of it, and in that moment, when we realized there, we did not know at that time there was not going to be any other recommendations to consider?
It was not presented at that time that we would have to accept the recommendation of the administration. There was a thought that there would be some choice involved.
Why are we saying we have to accept if there were people there to discuss, bring other options and consider? We're saying it as if your, your hands were tied and you had to accept it.
The CAC is choreographed. It's structured, and there's a process that it's followed. There's not an option to say, I don't agree with this, and we don't want to move forward with it.
I don't know if I agree with that. It's a committee of people to give their opinions and to speak out, and my understanding is it wasn't a consensus at first. So how did it get there if we're saying that we just had to accept it?
To my knowledge, there was no consensus.
How did we get to the recommendation then if there was not consensus?
There was slips of paper that were handed out where you had to select which projects that you would put forward, and only the Westview consolidation was on that slip of paper.
So, but there was an opportunity to speak about it. I guess I'm saying there was opportunity to discussion, and I don't, I think that it does the committee a disservice to say, well, we just had to accept it. As being on other committees and being a part of them, just saying you have to accept it, I don't expect that us as board members think that that should be appropriate behavior in a committee meeting with administrators, and not saying you call them to the carpet right then, but if there's more opportunities to talk to them, similar to me being on Team Lee Summit, if something comes up and it, it doesn't smell right and it doesn't feel right, why is it not addressed in between the meetings then? I'm just saying that to say they just had to accept it, I think does a disservice to the work that those people did, and it makes it seem like they just followed whatever the board said.
Quite frankly, I think the way it was handled by the administration was a disservice to the CAC. And I'm not trying to be inflammatory, Board Member Johnson. It was very, it was a very contentious issue.
But the CAC eventually decided, and it's not because they were strong-armed, it's not because they were just told you have to accept it.
They weren't strong-armed, they just weren't given any other options.
But can you not present other options?
No.
So at CAC, you can't present other options?
That's correct.
And you can't push back, you can't ask additional questions, ask for more information?
That's correct, and you're compartmentalized. You can't even talk to the people sitting at the other table.
You were on CAC, right, Erica? Can you speak to some of this for me, please?
Well, yes, I was on CAC last year. Um, I didn't have that same experience. I felt like it was an oppo, I did feel like you had the opportunity to speak up, so, um, I, I guess I had a different experience, so that's, that's my experience.
Again, forming another committee, how is it going to be different? How is the administration not going to also push this forward? And I see we have a ratio here, which I also am not in agreement with, the twenty to one. Not sure where that number came from, so that's going to be my next question. In terms of having a twenty-one ratio of community members to admin, I'm assuming that's to balance out this idea that admin said, accept this. Where did that number come from and why? And why do we think this is going to be different, having a twenty to one?
I guess the thought process was simply thinking of how many people sit at a circular table, which is usually eight to ten, and it gives the opportunity for tables not to be geared by administration and to be led by community members, building administrators and staff.
And how many building administrators are on CAC?
I don't know the actual number, we can request that information. There was, there was a pretty significant number of district employees and administrators in the CAC. I don't know the actual number, though.
Just curious if it's the same ratio, so again, if it's going to make a difference? If we're talking about sitting at a round table and who's dictating what's happening?
Well, I'm open to alternatives. I mean, I understand if, if you, if you disagree, I respect that. This is just a, just something to put forward to the board for discussion. There's certainly things that can be changed. Or if you don't support it at all and the resolution doesn't pass, the alternative is, you know, there, I'm not prepared to support the bond with Lee Summit Elementary in it and no conditions for giving the opportunity to the community to have a voice in what, what's going to happen with their school. So that's where I'm at with it and I'm open to other compromises. This was just an opportunity and a starting point for us to have dialogue. It, it by no means has to be this way.
Right, and I'm not saying moving as far as, oh, if not approving this, but given the short timeline, this is the opportunity I had to ask the questions about that. And I just think one district leader, there has to be some education also of what to expect and what the district already has to offer to educate this group. So I don't think that one person would be enough, provided. And it, I wouldn't want it to get to the point where you need two district leaders, but now we have to find forty community members to come out. That's the only thing is meeting that. But we spoke, I guess the idea is that we can have additional.
The ex officio.
The ex officio members.
So that's what I was going to say, is we can also incorporate people to come in during this, these meetings and be the subject matter experts to have that opportunity for explanation.
Right. Okay, I'm going to yield the floor, I'm pretty sure others have more questions.
Board Member Haley?
Yeah, I would like to first of all, thank all the members of the CAC. I would like to thank the citizens in the community that have reached out to the board in their last few days to let us, uh, share your views with us. And I would like to thank my board colleagues. I haven't been in contact with them for the last week or so, almost daily. And I know that there's a lot of work been put into trying to figure the best way forward for our community. In the past, in my career, I've spent a lot of time spending money and I have never spent forty million dollars with an hour of discussion. I know the, the administration made the recommendation that we need to do X. They didn't ask us our opinion on it. They didn't ask us if, if we thought there were any other ideas. And I believe that, um, if we as a community decide that we want to add the services down there to that school because those are our most disadvantaged children, it's a Title I school and maybe they need more services, uh, than some of the other schools. Personally, I don't have a problem with that. I think if we, if we think we're going to save a lot of money by closing Lee Summit Elementary, I can tell you as a businessman, we're not, because nobody's losing their job. Eighty-five percent of our money is spent on payroll, as Dr. Shelton just pointed out, and nobody is losing their job in this, uh, proposed consolidation. So the, the cost savings is not there that I see. I just believe there are other options. And, and to Board Member Johnson's point, I believe there are other things that we can consider that the CAC didn't consider, that the district didn't propose, uh, that could, you know, impact that school in a very positive way and allow it to be kept open. I'm not saying that, um, I'm in favor of one thing or the other. I'm in favor of a transparent process and we had zero transparency in this process and that's quite offensive to me, quite frankly. So I just think that moving forward, we need to be very deliberate and we need to be very sensitive to our community members and stakeholders and not deal with them in the way we have in this, in this case recently. Thank you.
Board Member Myers?
Um, I have a few things, but I don't, uh, now that we've gone in several directions, I'm not sure where to start. Sorry. I guess my first and biggest question at this moment in time is what is deemed to be the specific timeline for said committee's work? When's it going to start and when can we expect a, a report?
Are you asking me?
I.
Oh, um, they could start as soon as Dr. Buck assembles this, uh, the structure. Um, and as far as timeline, um, I deliberately didn't add a timeline because I don't want there to be some artificial expiration date for when this decision needs to be made. Because in reality, there isn't a, a timeline. As we've discussed with regard to the usage of the funds, as long as you don't sell the bond funds, then they don't sit in an investment account, there's no risk of arbitrage. And, you know, this, this committee has time, um, to collect information, to talk through scenarios and to get the appropriate community engagement that was not provided, um, before this recommendation came to us. So to me, I am hesitant to impose a timeline because I don't want to limit, um, what this group of people has the opportunity to do.
Then I guess in, in conjunction with timeline, um, this might be more for Dr. Buck, how much of this data does the district already have available that would just need to be assembled, presented and given an opportunity for people to kind of dissect and get their mind around?
So it depends on how we do this. Um, first off, when the committee would start, we couldn't start before January sixteenth because the board would have to approve one of the co-chairs. So we would have to ask for people to volunteer, then there'd have to be a selection. So it couldn't start until January sixteenth, the earliest. If we go and get an outside consultant to lead the work, um, then we'll have to see what their timeline would be. If it's done just with the committee without a consultant, it'll depend on how fast they can get through the information. You saw a lot of the data already, we, we have the data ready for you. So it's up to the committee to create an enrollment study and, I want to make sure I use the correct terms, and a strategic plan. And now it's district-wide, so it's not, in the resolution, it's a district strategic plan, so it's not just these two buildings. So that will extend it and take it longer. I would love, but I don't know if we can do it, um, in the time. I would love to have clarity for voters on April eighth, they know what they're voting on. Everybody wants that when you put a bond issue. But I don't know if the committee could finish by April eighth, maybe they could. I just don't know, once they get together and whether we do a consultant or not, um, that would be, and I would love direction from the board. Do you want an outside consultant or do you want to have it just run by the committee? That part, I don't know. By consultant, they're just managing the meetings and, and providing feedback and, and, and doing the digging for you to provide data. There are companies that do that.
I think I too would like clarity to the voters, which is why I was starting with the timeline situation. Just, um, I want to have faith that this is intended to be a good faith compromise and not just a way to confuse voters about what we are asking them to support. I, 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 um, I would like to have clarity myself, I guess. Let's see here. I had these really kind of in a reasonable order, but we've kind of gone in different directions. Let's talk for just a minute about Westview. I feel like Westview is being incredibly quiet and patient at the moment because I think they're probably just trying to wait out and, and not be, uh, you know, offensive to their neighbors that live, you know, across the street or two blocks over. They desperately need a kitchen. However, that is a much bigger part of a project. And I don't know how practical, realistic, possible, fiscally responsible or even reasonable it would be to jump right on in with a kitchen project. And I don't know if Mr. Gurrell is here, but this is probably more to you. You know, what, what would be the, what would be the, uh, I don't know, how would you handle this part of this resolution about the, the kitchen project at Westview? Would it be prudent to go ahead and, go ahead and put shovels out there for that one? Or is that something that's going to have to go on hold as well? It seems like the construction project, well, obviously there's a sequence to it and this is a much bigger thing than just that. So I'm wondering what the sequence of events there would be with regards to that. Is he here?
Yes, Ms. Gurrell's in the back.
Yeah.
So, and Ms. Gurrell come up, I, I don't remember. I do believe the expansion would take over current classroom space. It would impact, we didn't expand the building in other places, but Kyle will work his way up.
All right, I shouldn't have sat on the back row. So the, the kitchen addition, um, just due to the, the current site layout, would most likely have to go on the front of the building and would have a huge impact on the overall site, um, operations. And so, you know, as we all know, living through building renovations is very difficult for, uh, the operations of the school, staff, the, the kids especially. And so, um, you know, anything, I, I hesitate to say that anything can't be done. But it would, uh, it would drastically improve the complexity of the project to separate into two parts and try to, to parse that out.
Thank you. I, I, you know, it's not what I do for a living, but it just seemed like where it is and the layout of where things are right now, I just wasn't, I couldn't picture it in my head, so, uh, thank you. Does anybody else have a construction question?
I'll just add, so when he goes in the front, we'd have to do a new bus loop and such because it would push out into the area. So it's, when we do it, it's not just cafeteria, it's going to impact other things. Either we, we expand where we're at now or we put in front, but both have, uh, implications that cost more money than just the cafeteria.
Right, yeah, all the site work would need to be done with it.
That's correct. And we have confirmed with the city with regards to possible wardrode traffic impacts that we'll be able to work with them with regards to our entrances and exits and whatnot to where we're not worried about, uh, causing a massive problem over there.
Yeah, I have communicated with the, the city's public works director and there's no concerns, uh, about conflicts with the project.
Thank you. Let's see. I guess, well, maybe this is maybe another one for you or another one for Dr. Buck, I don't know. Ideally, when was the district planning to kick off the project on the Westview property? Assuming that we're going to try to do this consolidation construction?
Well, I'll give you the easy answer. We have not scheduled, um, any of the projects. We, we've been waiting on board approval, uh, direction and then we'll look at the, the bond issue comprehensively and phase the projects across the districts appropriately. So, yeah, I really don't know how any of the projects would be.
The only thing I would add to that is we have, we'll put, Kyle will put together a design team. And so if it is, um, so for example, Greenwood already has a design team going right now. We do not have a design team going from either Lee Summit by itself or Westview by itself or a combination of the staff, um, if it's a consolidation. Those haven't started, we're waiting for clarity from the board on what we're doing.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to talk for just a second then about, um, Lee Summit Elementary. I toured your school, I thought it was, um, uh, super warm and inviting and, um, obviously, uh, there's a lot of good things that are happening there every day. But I do have some questions as we look at these numbers. What does staffing look like for next year? In other words, are they slated to continue to maintain the same level of FTE next, just next school year? Without even doing anything with a bond? And are, are they slated to stay the same, are they slated to lose an FTE? And when I, when I use the term lose, I, I, I mean not replace a teacher that either chooses to leave, uh, and/or force transfer someone to another building because of a staffing situation or something like that. I was just curious as to where we are on, on that.
With current numbers, we would not, um, lose a classroom teacher next year in the building. Current second grade is today, is it twenty, well, I think it was today, it was twenty-eight. Um, you're, uh, the standards are twenty-seven when you go to third grade. Now, if that declined to say twenty-four or twenty-three, then we would have a different discussion. So it's something we're monitoring. It's probably more in the world of, uh, other positions, which you saw, like, you know, if you go below two-hundred in a building, do you go down to one, one day of a library being open? So that's the tough conversations we'll have. Again, we're kind of waiting for this decision before we have those conversations.
Yeah, I, okay, thank you for that. Another question related to Lee Summit, um, Elementary. Do we know, um, this might be more for Dr. Barker at this point, I guess, since, um, Dr. Kenny isn't here. Do we know what percentage of students at Lee Summit Elementary have been there since kindergarten?
We do have some information that, that is not, um, always immensely clean because there are sometimes students who will come in and out, in and out. So we're looking at students who are currently enrolled, who might have also been enrolled in earlier grades. When we look in general at what we would consider a mobility rate across districts, um, our district average mobility rate is, um, about fourteen point five. Lee Summit Elementary's average mobility rate is twenty-seven point nine. So definitely a school in which there is more in and out in terms of student enrollment. Looking also again, this is a little bit difficult because we look at grade levels and the data is best reported in terms of the number of fifth graders who've been there for three years or longer, so it's not exactly what you're asking for. But for example, um, Lee Summit Elementary's current fifth graders, seventy-nine percent of them have been there three years or longer. But I think it's worth noting that we have a really small N here comparatively, right? We're talking about thirty-one of thirty-nine, things like that. But definitely, um, more mobility there than some of our other buildings.
Do we have the same mobility with regards to staff?
That would be more of a Dr. Carson question.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, I.
Sorry.
You know, we looked at some numbers and pulled data on this and when I looked at it, the year, and kind of look at it as average years of experience in that building. And it was around, uh, six years, I think. And we have some folks that have been there for a long time. And then we have some folks that are newer to the school and that averages out to, I want to get the actual number here, so let me bring it up. It was, it was between six and seven is what I recall.
Do you want us to have another question and come back to you?
Um, as I say, I can, I can. I would like to let the families in the crowd that are here from Lee Summit Elementary know. I have listened, I have read and I have really tried to be attentive to things that you have brought up. And one of the things that's came up two or three different times has been this different demographic study that's other than the one that, that the board, you know, our guy does for us. And I have tried and tried, tried to find this. I've even reached out to the city of Lee Summit to ask for this. So I don't know, not for lack of trying, but I want to be completely transparent. I've tried to find another study that shows different demographic trends for families with students and school-aged children in the, in the downtown area over the next, you know, three, five, ten years. And I, I have been unsuccessful in that endeavor. And I, I did have a conversation with, um, with the city council, so. Dr. Carson?
Six point four years is the average for that school.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And that data is classroom teachers. And that data is classroom teachers and the average of the years they've spent in that building.
Uh huh, thank you. I think I'm done for the moment.
Thank you. Board Member Miller?
Thank you. President Foley, did you support, when we're talking about the CAC, you and Mr. Haley are on CAC this year. Did you support the closure of Lee Summit Elementary during that meeting?
I was not given that question to answer.
Okay. And just talking about transparency, some of my questions here are around that. President Foley, this one's for you too. Can you clarify, and this is specific to the resolution, so I'm kind of coming back to the resolution. Can you clarify if the majority of the board supported having this resolution drafted?
I would not know that answer to that question.
You don't know if the majority of the board was made aware of this resolution?
That's correct, yes. Because we only had limited amount of times to meet. And we did not have the opportunity to gather for another additional work session where we could collaborate on ideas.
I understand that, but I guess what I, when I think about collaboration and transparency and, I mean, we're a board of seven, not of two. And I believe some of my colleagues would agree that you should have received feedback from the full board before presenting this resolution.
That would constitute a meeting and would violate sunshine.
Were some of the board members contacted about the resolution?
Yes.
And how were they contacted?
Telephone.
Was there a reason why not all of the board members were contacted individually by telephone? Because that would not be a quorum or a meeting?
I can respond to that.
This is, well, no, I, this is for President Foley.
Okay.
I would not want to violate the spirit of the sunshine law.
Do you agree, though, that it would have been helpful for, because we continue to talk about transparency and the community needs transparency? I feel like as a board, we deserve transparency and the ability to weigh in on something that you're presenting.
This was written and was submitted as soon as possible. It also, I know it was run through legal, which was taking time to get that accomplished. But I do trust that it was, it was done in a manner in order to get this available as soon as possible to board members for review.
But not all board members were, some board members were given it before it was put on the agenda, is that correct? Or it was discussed with other board members, with some board members? I can help you. I talked to other board members that received the information. And I talked to some board members that didn't receive the information. So I was just trying to figure out if this is truly a board of seven that makes decisions or if it's a board of two. My next question is for Dr. Buck. Dr. Buck, when did you become aware of this resolution?
It was either last Thursday or Friday. President Foley came and showed me, I think I was on your phone because I don't think you had your computer. We wouldn't pull up on our computer. And we had a discussion about it, whether I'd be supportive of it or not.
And were you involved in any part of drafting it?
It was already drafted at that point. I think Joe, our legal, gave me a call afterwards and said he was going to send information to the board and he just wanted to loop me in ahead of time. So, no, I did not draft it.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Vice President Eslic, before you sent the draft to Joe on Monday, did any other board members have a chance to review your resolution?
I contacted Board Member Haley because both he and I were the most strongly opposed to approving the bond with Lee Summit Elementary and Westview in it. And because the two of us were willing to split the bond, and that was the only other option that the two of us had discussed, I asked him if he would be in support of this compromise. So that's the reason why I reached out to him. Because I was under the impression the rest of the board was very much in favor of either supporting the bond as is or really not having much dialogue about an alternative.
Did you ask?
No, I did not. Not until Monday when I submitted a draft for the agenda, which was still in working copy with legal.
President Foley, do you think that there is any other way that we could have worked with district staff to accomplish the same goal without the need of the resolution?
I do not. The only choices that we had been presented were to pass the bond recommendation as is or to modify the bond recommendation. And this is an option that allows us to actually put forward the bond recommendation and approve it as the CAC put forward with the allocation of the funds without breaking it into multiple bonds over multiple years as was publicly suggested by fellow board members.
So I'm glad you brought up the CAC. Was the CAC consulted about this new recommendation for a resolution? They're the ones who worked on this whole recommendation in the first place. So I'm just curious if they were consulted or just made aware that this was coming.
I was under the impression that once the CAC makes the recommendation, it's up to the board to have the dialogue and figure out what to do with the recommendation. So unless we were going to kick the recommendation back to them and ask them to deliberate further, I personally didn't feel like that was the right mechanism or usage of CAC. They had already done their work. They had submitted a recommendation to us.
I wasn't, I'm sorry, let me, let me be more clear. So I wasn't saying, give it back to them so that they could convene again and make another decision. I was just asking if they were provided the information, in all fairness, to just say, hey, this is what we're doing. We just wanted you to know. We appreciate your time and we're moving this direction. Just as a, I mean, I guess, just like I would have appreciated knowing that this is the direction that board leadership wanted to go.
This is just a suggestion. If this is not the will of the board, then we can move forward with a vote and see where it goes from there. And then we can move on to conversations about the bond. This was truly just a suggestion. I understand the concern about transparency. I feel like there's nothing more transparent than having this conversation right here in public. And the reason why, I mean, I know you asked President Foley this question, but I'll respond regarding the question about why not another mechanism, why a resolution. This is as much a commitment to the community and a public statement of what we plan to hold the district leadership accountable to as it is just a document full of words. It is a commitment from those of us on the dais recognizing that the community asked for more time. The community asked for more collaboration. They asked for the opportunity to have their voices heard and to be part of the process. And this is that commitment to them, that we will honor that and that we will hold the district accountable to giving them what they've asked for. So that was really the purpose of this. No ulterior motive. That's it. It was just a condensed timeline and a lot to try to work through, so.
And I'm not saying there's ulterior motive, but I do think that as we talk about, as we've heard the many criticisms about how this process was handled, with many feeling that they weren't given enough time to vet the process and the plan and the concerns from the community regarding the timeline and the lack of transparency, I just think it's not fair that some of us on the board were presented with this at the 18th hour, literally four days ago. And then yesterday, another version of this with, which included 54 additions and 41 deletions. I mean, how are we supposed to, how are we supposed to make a decision on something that we just received and that we had no recollection of until four days ago? Right? There's some parallels, right?
I think they're referring to what we would have to vote at the last hour. It's kind of a, it's a conundrum. But I mean, what they're, what they're saying is that they were given the information at the last hour. The CAC was given the information at the last hour, and we were too.
I'm saying the same thing. That's exactly right.
Okay, but this, this is a good faith effort for the community. We have all received emails from both sides, from approve it, don't approve it, to, you know, the CAC committee, to retired teachers, to, I mean, everybody has been sending us emails on this. And we, this is a good faith effort to try and meet a middle ground here for everybody. Why do we want to divide our community any further?
Thank you. President Foley or Eslic, this is a question for either of you guys. Can you explain why the amount changed from 46.7 million to 40?
I asked him to. So what I didn't say earlier, and I thought about after I talked, is that I did give suggestion to President Foley last week and then I did it again with Vice President Eslic on Monday. They had had a change, but it didn't make it in the draft that went in the board packet the first time. Is to put approximately 40 instead of the set number 46.7. Because if you take both projects separately, it's Dr. Shelton. I think it's 39 and a half million. And then if you do both projects together, it's 28.7 million. So it was a number big enough that could do either way. So that's one of the reasons why I pushed my button because I remember that after I talked earlier. I offered that please lower it and also put approximate because we're making guesses based on what architects are saying. When we actually go out to bid, it may be a different number.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Buck. This one's going to come to you too. I just, and I think Stacy asked a version of this. And so it may, but I don't know that you answered. What is the timeline? Do you, if this should pass, this resolution, what timeline do you consider appropriate for the completion of all aspects of the resolution?
I don't know if I'm prepared to tell you when it would be done because it's going to, A, depend on, do you want an outside consultant to help us with this? Or do you want to do it internally? And then when the groups get together, they're going to have to come up with their plan and how to roll this out. So I don't think I can answer that. I would love it to be done by April 8th. I don't think it can, though. So that's what I would say to that. I, do you mind if I ask a, or share a concern? In this, it does talk about a district-wide enrollment evaluation strategic plan. But then we keep talking about the two communities here being the committee. I think if we're going to have a district strategic plan, do we need to have two committees? Do we need to have a district come up with strategic plan enrollment evaluation and then have another committee talk about the options for this part? Because I think, I don't, I also don't want to have just two buildings decide for 25 buildings also.
No, I guess the thought process is trying to evaluate LSE and Westview in isolation is not ideal because they border other communities that have impacts to their enrollment. And potentially boundary shifts with those enrollment areas can help with attendance and those sorts of things. So that was really my thought. Maybe there's a different way to structure that, which I'm perfectly fine with that suggestion. That's really, as long as we're covering the intent, which is don't look at LSE and Westview in isolation, but if there's other shifts that need to happen because we have certain areas that are growing and we can move those students. But the point was not to go in, touch Lee Summit Elementary and Westview and mess with that school system. And then in a couple of years, because of other enrollment issues, then we're moving kids again in those boundary areas because we have other areas that need to be addressed. So that was really kind of the big picture that I was trying to get across.
And I totally understand that. And number one, it kind of also has more of what Dr. Shelton was talking about, the district-wide. And I would like to have representation throughout the district for the district one. So I don't know if this is two different committees, number one, and I think it's number one. My bifocals are getting worse. Number one and number five are almost two different intentions. And it would be nice to finish number one before you finish number five, but that delays us more. I don't like that. That's what I'm trying to see if maybe number, so Mason or Summit Point or Hawthorne Hill or Meadow Lane, that way they would be involved, and also middle schools and high schools, would be involved in that district enrollment evaluation strategic plan because it's a district one. And then have another committee look at, all right, how to implement that? What's the best options for these two buildings?
So would it be better to just leave that as is and then allow in a charter form for that whole district committee to then have a subcommittee for like an impact or something like that? Like an impact group? Does that make sense? If it's just chartered that way? That way you don't have to try and spell all that out in this?
Doug, just going to defer to Joe here on this one. Is it, I'm reading as it's one committee. So do we need to delineate that here? I don't want to set us up to upset other parts of the community too.
You know, one option would be to, you know, if the board were to approve something like this, you know, this resolution is not binding forever. It could be modified next month. And that, you know, that might be an appropriate way to deal with that if there's sentiment to do something about this tonight. Or we could go through the process of amending it. I don't know that this resolution, though, would, in my view, give that committee the authority to form a subcommittee when the board's spoken pretty clearly about what it wants to do here, unless the resolution were to be changed.
So maybe it would be better to kind of deliberate on that further and figure out how to spell that out and then revise the resolution at a subsequent meeting, at the next meeting?
Yes, I would love to meet both intentions.
Okay. So revise it for next meeting. Got it. We'll talk about that some more.
And I'm sorry I didn't say that ahead of time when we talked earlier this week because I didn't know, number five, your intention was just for those two buildings to be looking at that choice. I thought, when I first read it, I thought it was only a district strategic plan and you guys would make a decision. But now I'm coming to more clarity, so I thank you for that. More planning, by the way, Board Member Miller. Ms. Eslic did, when got from information from legal, said, hey, you should probably reach out to bond counsel. So I put, Ms. Eslic reached out to me, said, can I visit with bond counsel? I said, you bet. And I put her in charge with bond counsel and they had a conversation on Tuesday to plan it out. So I helped facilitate it as well.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. And I'm just going to make this last statement in closing, and I'm sure other board members have other things to say. I just want to make it clear that, you know, no matter what action that the board takes, I know that we're not going to make everyone happy. But I do believe that the community and the CAC expected a definitive answer, not the actions that leave people feeling uncertain. I don't know. And for me, I would say this is, Dr. Buck, I do think this situation could have been avoided. And I hope that we've learned a valuable lesson. And moving forward, my goal is to really ensure that we commit to valuing everyone's voice in the very beginning of any process. So, thank you.
Board Member Haley?
Yeah, I'd like to add just a little bit. You know, this is obviously a very emotionally charged issue. This district has been on a five-year bonding schedule as long as I can remember. And Dr. Buck told us that he knew five years ago this was an issue. There's been five years to address this. And the district waited until a month or so before we're supposed to put a bond recommendation out and made us aware of this challenge. That has placed a lot of strain on this community. It's placed a lot of strain on this board. And I believe that we all need to take a deep breath and we need to look for the right answer, not the quickest answer. And, you know, for that reason, I support this resolution because it allows us to put the money, make the money available to do either project. Okay? We don't have to decide today how the process is even going to be. We can decide over the next couple of months what the process looks like. It's more important to me as a board member and a member of this community that we come up with the right decision, not the quick decision. And looking at Dr. Shelton's spreadsheets, I'm a spreadsheet guy. I like spreadsheets. But when you look at that number of I'm a spreadsheet guy, I like spreadsheets. But when you look at that number of two-hundred-and-thirteen, that's two-hundred-and-thirteen children, it's just not a number on a spreadsheet. And I believe that the community needs to hear, and have the opportunity to give their feedback into the process, and the choice that the board ultimately supports and makes. So, I'm just gonna ask everybody to give everyone the benefit of the doubt, that we're all up here looking for the right answer, and we all have a positive intent. And hopefully we can kind of de-escalate this, and give our community some reassurance that we're gonna listen to them, and we're gonna be transparent moving forward. So, I support this in its current form. The, the board can, can modify it at any time if we feel that it's not adequate. You know, we were made aware of that from the legal team. So, I'm gonna support moving this forward in its current form, so we can give a little bit of closure to our community members, and let them sleep a little safer tonight, or a little more comfortable in their beds, knowing that their school's not gonna close next year necessarily. They've got an opportunity to share their views with the community, or with the, the district, the board, and let's look at other options. The only option we've ever been given is close and consolidate. That's it. We've never been allowed to consider moving pre-K over there, or any other options that may affect the viability of that campus. So, that's where I'm at on this. I, I believe we need to go ahead and support this resolution, and I think we need to get the bond verbiage lined out, and we need to have a transparent process moving forward. And if we need to figure out what that looks like next month, we can do that.
Dr. Buck?
Agree with both of you. Could have been handled better. We did follow the similar timeline with Greenwood and Hazel Grove, and obviously, it wasn't a hot-button issue, so it worked for them. Lesson learned. It did not work here. You're a hundred percent right. We just tried to file board policy FB, but, you know, lesson learned, right? Policy can't tell you exactly what's gonna work, and you don't find out until afterwards. I didn't say earlier, when I was asked last week, do I support a resolution? I do. I, I support a compromise. I do want some clarity on the district versus the, this decision, because I'm a little confused there. I don't have direction necessarily which one to do, because it's a little confusing to me. But if we can clarify that, as I said last week, I'm supportive of a, of a compromise. And just please know, the bond issue is recommended. I'm always gonna recommend following committee, because committees get very upset when you don't, right? I still have people on the middle school boundary committee who come up complaining about the purple versus pink. If you were here, you definitely know what that meant. That being said, that, no committee gives a list that I would have made. This isn't the exact list I would have made. Just like when Team Lee Summit comes forward with salary recommendation, I always support it. It's never the one I would have written, because it's not about me. All right? That's why we got committees to come together to make decisions. And if we have this resolution, it'll be the same thing. And whatever this committee comes forward with, I'm gonna recommend it, even if it's not what I would have chose. So, just please know that. But I, I've apologized multiple times to you guys, and to when I was at the community, both times at Lee Summit Elementary. It could have been done better. There's no doubt about it. And I do want to clarify, five years ago, it wasn't like you have to do something. It was a conversation about, this is something that's coming down the pike, once you be aware of, it's eventually gonna have to address it. We knew apartments were coming in, we were hoping that would bring kids. That did not. Then, when we had talks about buying Paradise Park, there was conversations about, well, should we make that move now at Lee Summit Elementary and do great beginnings there? And I recommended no for multiple reasons, access, safety of roads where it's at. So, that's, that's the conversation we've had. We've not had a, I've never been directed, you must close the school. That's not, I, I want to, it sounds like a misconception I want to try to clear up. But that has been brought to me that, hey, we knew this from, I think, in the board, and the superintendent, and assistant superintendent of, and Steve's prior person, talked about this in two thousand and eighteen, about what could it become? We're gonna have this issue coming forward. So, it's a conversation that predates me.
Board Member Johnson?
Okay, just a few more things. I want to say thank you, Dr. Buck, for mentioning the five years. I felt like that kept being brought up. And again, he never said that he was told in five years, you're gonna have to close the school. I believe the conversation was to keep an eye on this. He was not told to close the school. So, I think correcting misinformation is extremely important.
I, I certainly didn't mean to imply he was told to close the school. I, he was told there was an issue there, is what I understood.
He was told to keep an eye on it.
Right.
That doesn't mean there's an issue necessarily, but it's to keep, because it could have grown.
It could have.
So, again, he said to keep an eye on it. He was not given any directive, so there was no action to take at that time. I'm not stating that there was enough information shared in a timely fashion, though. I'm not saying that. But this, he knew five years ago, I think he was told to keep an eye on it. And you know what happened after a year of him starting? COVID-19. So, I think we need to give some lev, you know, give some grace there with that. Also, when, just to us as a board, I, I just implore us, when we're sitting on these committees, if we think that things aren't happening a certain way, we should be speaking up. I sit on Team Lee Summit, and if I think things don't seem correct, or if someone comes to me and wants me to present something, I think that's why we're there, to consult and to bring things up. And even if you don't do it in that moment, it is my understanding that that's why we sit on those committees too. So, I just think that that is something we should do. If I'm sitting on a committee and I feel like my hands are tied and I can't do anything, then my question would then be, what am I sitting here for? So, I, I really want us to look into that. A trigger point for the resolution would be great, but I understand, again, we can look at that later. I had some amendments, but given the time, I'm just gonna hold off. And again, it was just wording. One of the things that the resolution mentions is the historic. Lee Summit Elementary School is not designated by the government as a historic site. It has history, but is not historic. And when we say historic, that can have other implications for what can happen with that land. So, I, that was just one of the big things. Again, in terms of the ratio, I think if ex officio members could be there, and also it'd be great if someone could watch in the gallery, only because I think it's helpful to hear some of the conversations, and not hear it presented back to me by a third person. But that's just a recommendation I have. I want to see this bond pass. I do. I hear the voices, I've read the emails, I've heard the stories, I've met with people. Yes, there is history, there is feelings, there is a community here that has to be considered. And I think that is, I think that has a lot of weight. As a person who moved here from someone else, for instance, I love Christmas. I love Christmas because of the time I spent with my family in the house I grew up in. But those memories did not go away because I came to Kansas City. Those memories did not go away because I'm no longer in that home. And the only thing that's constant in life is change, and change is hard. It is. But if things say that we have to make these changes, so that you remain having full FTEs of librarians, and social workers, and counselors, and other things, I think that we should consider that. I really, I really do. Your, your nostalgia and your feelings, they stay with you regardless of the brick and mortar. That, that building, that building does not make it. But having things that are future-ready, and having things that are accessible for ADA, and having those things that help our students be competitive in this global economy, this is global, you're not just competing with those, with your children that are in this, on, in these neighborhoods, we have to consider how to make our kids successful in life. And life is global. It's, it isn't just a small community. It's not. The, the community is the people who make it, not the building, who make it. It's not brick and mortar. But that doesn't exclude the fact that we should have the data. I think we still should have the data, and that's fine. But I think when we think about feelings, and what makes us feel warm and fuzzy, this building doesn't do it. It's the people we're around and the people we're with. And if these children all move in one cohort, in my mind, they can stay together and do that, as opposed to when we think about changing boundary lines. I know we said other options weren't considered, but when I look at the schools around it, are we gonna, or twelve families here, twelve families here, or ten families there? Then you break up and disrupt all of those groups. This cohort could move together. Again, it's just another argument that these people, that everyone could move together, is what I'm saying to consider. So, thank you.
Board Member Myers?
So, I just have a couple of follow-ups. But are, are we, are we gonna actually, we're gonna talk about the bond, right? That's still gonna come up on the, because I have some, these, these things kind of are starting to mesh together as terms of like overall comments. But, okay, then I'll put that on park for just a second. I agree wholeheartedly with the statement that these, these students aren't just numbers on a spreadsheet. And I, I want to give them the best quality educational environment possible. And it's, it is important that, that, you know, we do our best to be good stewards to the entire community. I, I don't mean to imply that we shouldn't in any way, shape, or form. But since joining the board, it's been continuously stressed to me to assume positive intent in dealing with difficult issues, situations, and people that hold differing points of view. And it is in the spirit that I am working to reconcile this resolution. I really want positive intent, that this proposed committee will be able to do its work quickly, efficiently, and effectively, in a manner to not jeopardize whatever ends up happening with Westview and Lee Summit Elementary. And I keep kind of bringing Westview up, because I, I do feel like they are, they are equally in a, in a partnership right now, as far as not knowing what's going to happen. I also want to assume that the committee members of stakeholders will go into this task with an open mind, to get the job done, and not planning to continuously throw sand into the gears of a project as a way to kick it down the road another five years. I want to have good faith, and maintain good faith, that this is intended to be a legitimate compromise, that really is a positive way to get something done and resolved, and not a way to confuse voters, to muck it up, and make it very, very difficult to pass a no-tax increase bond, that we would really like them to support in April. So, I think that's probably about enough on the resolution for me. So, thank you.
Board Member Garrett?
Thank you. Okay. I don't want to beat a dead horse, because I feel like a lot of good points have been made by you, the people, and by my fellow board members. We should be looking not just to maintain our buildings, or, or to bring attention to the needs of our buildings, but also to the needs of our students. And I, I firmly believe in this sign here, and I just want to, you guys know what's best. I mean, as far as the, the students that go there. I am in a different community, so I don't know what the needs of this community are until you all raised your voice. And now I understand. And I believe that these kids are, it's, it's not the building, per se, that we need to bring, that, that is what's the attention that is being brought right now. It's for the students. And the smaller class-sized room's gonna give the students for this area the attention that they need. If we need to fill rooms, because we're not using the building at capacity, then maybe we can look for alternatives, such as the pre-K. I mean, I think that that could bring some more students into this building, and then we would be able to use it at full capacity. So, I am in full support of this resolution, that we give it time, as Board Member Haley has suggested, and that we take our time about making the decisions from going forward. I, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you. So, in, in looking at this resolution, I see this as a compromise that allows us to get community engagement, and to have more time to not make a rushed decision. Should we have not had this as an opportunity presented here tonight, then we would have been given the choice to just accept the recommendation as-is, and that would have sealed the fate of a school, without a lot of conversation and community involvement that we know is really needed. That being said, if we, if we were to pass the resolution, that would allow us to then accept the recommendation of the CAC. And we might be putting conditions on one specific project, but we would not be arguing with the different projects, and moving things around and shifting things. So, we would be honoring a lot of the spirit of what the CAC was, was involved with in deciding. I did hear questions about the, the scope of the committees, the involvement of the committees, and if it was the strategic plan for the whole district versus the, the consolidation committee, and having that being two different committees. And so, with that, I know there's clarity that needs to be found in the resolution. I also heard that we might want to modify the verbiage around the word historic. With those two things being acknowledged, I wonder if it would be the intent of the board to maybe table this item for next month, so that we can make those modifications, and to be able to revisit this at the next meeting? If, if that be the case, would we get, do we need a vote? Since we made a motion and second, would we, oh, sorry, we have a, we have a comment?
Just, just so I'm clear. So, you're saying table, we're gonna table this resolution vote and the bond vote? Is that what?
This is the resolution vote.
So, we just...
They're independent agenda items. They would have to have a separate.
Board Member Myers?
I thought I understood Mr. Hatley upstairs tell us that if we needed to have something edited, we could perhaps, I, I, I don't think any of us wants to sit through another hour and a half discussion about this resolution. Like, we, we, we need to talk, I mean, not, it's not, not that it's not important, but we, we still need to think about the bond and, and so on. Is that, is that not still on the table to just perhaps have that happen still this evening?
If, if we can come up with the verbiage to make an amendment, we, we can do so. Wasn't sure if this was something that would need some extra additional thought that might involve tabling. I'd be open to either suggestion.
Board Member, Vice President Eslic?
Can we not just vote on, since, since some of the information we're really debating is not the, the whole intent of the resolution, and rather just the details, can we approve it tonight, but then vote on the bond, and then, or at least vote on it tonight, then vote on the bond, and then next month, we can bring recommendations for the modifications that we're talking about tweaking?
Yes, we can do that as well.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'm, I'm correct that we have a motion and second on the floor? Okay. With that being said, I'd see no additional questions for discussion. So, all those in favor of this resolution, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Is the board okay if I work with board leadership, try to make two committees? We'll, we'll work on that. I know, I know it's the holiday break, but, well, I'll see what I can do tomorrow to try to help get clarity, and you tell me if that hits the intent we just talked about.
We can send to the rest of the board, so they can review, and we can work through that.
That's a good point.
All right. Next up is item ten point zero-two, two thousand and twenty-five, bond ballot language.
I move that the board approve the resolution authorizing an election on the question of issue one, no?
Well, oh, I thought you, I thought, President Foley, you're gonna ask for who, I had my light.
I apologize. Did I miss that?
Board Member Miller?
Okay. I actually, I'm gonna make the motion, but I, I have a question for Joe. I would like to make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five bond language. However, I want to exclude LSE from the bond. Can you advise on the appropriate way to phrase that motion?
So, that's our bond counsel talking to our counsel. Right now...
Right now, the resolution... I'm sorry, the bond language doesn't list projects. And I think if I look at the background information, you don't see Lee Summit Elementary listed separate, but our resolution we just passed says it's an option as a stipulation on this. And so our two lawyers are going to talk now.
We'll debate each other, maybe not. It does occur to me that the board would have to approve any contract for any work anyway. So you can approve the bond in the full amount proposed, and at any point, if there is a contract pertaining to either Lee Summit Elementary or Westview, you can vote that down. That is one way to go about it. Or you can... All you're doing is approving basically the bonding capacity.
An example?
And the language gives you, as a board, the flexibility as we discussed.
Correct, yeah. This resolution is approving the bond language on the ballot. If the election is successful, we will come back to issue the bonds. There will be another resolution to issue the bonds, and at that point, you'll know what projects are going to be paid for with those bond proceeds. And those bonds can be issued in separate tranches, and then have to all go at 225 right at once and go in two, three tranches.
To give an example, so the 2020 bond did not have, as presented, did not have Miller Park or Geometry Instruction in it. But because of investments and premium bonds sold so well, because the environment was really good then, and projects coming under budget, because projects were coming under budget, we were allowed to... The board, a future board, not the same board that passed the ballot language of 2020, approved those projects for those bonds. So I don't think going with the can't tie, future hands, I don't think you could... I mean, I guess we could say it, but it doesn't mean anything because a future board could spend money on Lee Summit Elementary if they chose to with a new vote. Correct, Joe?
Yes, yes.
Well, just to... I just have a question, though, and I understand it's not in the bond language, but underneath in the back... Underneath on the background, it does list... It doesn't list LSE because within the recommendation, Westview and LSE were pulled together as a combination to present. That's... And I guess that's how I've... That's how I'm looking at the language.
I believe your previous vote just said a stipulation allows for it to be together or separate. Just so you know, like, we talked about Pleasant Lee Elementary is queued up to be next, so if somehow these things come under budget, or we sell for higher premium bonds in the environment when it finally gets to the time to sell tranches, or interest rates somehow are higher at that point, and we get more money from investment because we can hold on to the money, but spend 85% of the money within three years of getting it. So there's a short period of time it does sit in a bank. If any of those happen enough to prod, you know, take forth to you Pleasant Lee for 23 million, we would do that. We'd come to you and say, hey, we're in better shape. Are you guys okay with this? This is the next one on the list from CAC. So even though Pleasant Lee is not listed here, there's a chance Pleasant Lee in 2027 or 2028 may come forward to you. May not, depends on what the finances are happening at that time. Ben, am I saying that well?
Yeah, that's correct.
Ben, do you want to introduce yourself? They all know Joe.
Sure. Ben Thompson with Gilmore and Bell District Bond Counsel.
So if I'm correct, I heard a start of a motion and then a question. So do we have a motion on the floor? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I would... Well, that's what I was asking, though. Are you saying that the motion that I was asking for is not... Does not appropriate to pull LSE out of this bond?
Well, I guess that, you know, one of the questions I would have to ask is what you mean when you say you want to pull LSE out of the bond? Because that could mean a lot of different things, given the types of... The options that people are talking about. So are you saying...
So pulling it out so it's not in consideration for the consolidation? So that cannot... That's what our people are asking for. That's what they want. That's what their desire is. And so I'm just trying to go with the desire of what our people have told us. So that's my... That's where I'm at right now.
The issue, though, is that the resolution that you just adopted says you're going to take some time to study what you want to do with that. So if I'm understanding your motion, you would be saying, we're not going to forget that resolution, we're simply going to take that consolidation out of this bond project. So I guess I'm having trouble squaring that with the resolution that the board just adopted.
Well, I'm in favor of the resolution because I want the bond to pass, right? And I do... There's several projects on there. I am, I guess, of the mindset that LSE wants to be taken off the bond, and that's why I'm speaking up and...
Well, for instance, I think there are some renovations. Let's suppose LSE continues on. There is maintenance that's going to be required that would be included within the bond. There would be some renovations if it were to remain as an active building. If you put pre-K in there, you're probably going to do some renovations. So if you say you're taking it out of the bond, you're basically taking away from the board the ability to do those things that most people would say need to be done, even if that building remains active.
Well, but if I'm correct, we have money for maintenance and things to keep up our schools.
So we can ask Dr. Shelton for the exact amount, but the roof at Lee Summit Elementary is the second oldest, needs to be replaced, it's queued up, and that's two... How much did you say? 2.1 million. So that's not something that's just generally available in our current state with the capital funds, with our nickel put in there with the transfer. So on top of all the other things we do, so it would come out of a bond.
I guess I'm trying to understand with your motion, what would be the point of the committee that the board just authorize the superintendent to gather together if the decision is we're going to take them out of the bond altogether?
Well, and if this is not... If the two don't connect, then I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make it known that I do still want to look at the will of the people, which is they have said over and over that that's what they want. So I just wanted to express that, and I want to express it to all of you, that I see you, I hear you, I've read the messages, I've heard your hearts, and I want you to know that I'm listening. So I'll be here every step of the way, whatever this looks like tonight. I just want you to know that you can count on me.
So I guess we... There's a recommended motion for just approval of the bond language or the language... To put this on the ballot. I don't know that that motion's been made yet.
Can I get a motion?
The language in this... Excuse me. The resolution calling an election doesn't specify Lee Summit Elementary or any other project. Is that the intent that we're trying to put forward?
Yes.
Okay, so we want the voter... We want the voters to vote without a checklist of projects? Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
So what I would say is when we do a... We can only do an informational campaign, but there is going to be a private group that's already created, right, to help us with advocacy part of it. With that, we would talk about background information. We would list all these. Based on what we just did in 1001, we would say Westview Elementary or Lee Summit and Westview Elementary, to be determined by a committee and then the board at a later date. So I think we do have our list because of background information. You're agreeing to that, and just that third bullet has been changed based on 10.01 that we just passed.
Okay, I would like to ask Mr. Hatley. If we leave the verbiage the way it is in the resolution right now, does it allow the board the latitude to do either a consolidation or separate renovations of either campus?
Yes, it does. The resolution also.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented right now.
I think, Ben, you have to have the dollar amount? Do you have to have it in the motion?
It is... You don't have to have it in the motion, but you... The 225 million, you could approve the... I move to approve the resolution.
So long as the resolution says 225, he doesn't have to say it in the motion?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented by the administration on April 8, 2025, no tax rate increase, general obligation bond election.
Just read the motion. It's in there. You got to read the... Just read what's there, the recommended action.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I move that the board approve the resolution authorizing an election on the question of issuance of $225 million general obligation bonds by the reorganization school district number seven of Jackson County, Missouri.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion or questions? Sorry. Yes, but Board Member Haley's already expressed that he's got a question, and Board Member Myers has a question, so I don't think there will be any immediate vote. All right. Board Member Myers?
I really don't have a question, but I do have an anecdotal situation here that I would like to talk about for just a minute while we're waiting on my fellow board member to get back. I sit here in a slightly different position than my fellow board members on this topic. As a longtime now retired employee, I'm here to tell you that talk of Lee Summit Elementary and keeping it open or not is nothing new. It is not something that just popped up five years ago when Dr. Buck rolled into town. It's not something that came in this fall when the enrollment numbers were low. It... And there's people in the room that can verify my memory, but 10, 12 years ago, there was active chatter about changing Lee Summit Elementary into an alternative elementary school. Okay? There's also been talk of a choice-type magnet school downtown Lee Summit because it'd be centrally located, it'd be a great place for anybody to be able to get to. There's been talk about an early childhood facility prior to the Prairie View construction. And those are just a few that came to mind when I sat down yesterday and was just trying to think about institutional memory. This is... This particular site has been talked about repetitively in my career. And all these ideas, and I want to stress, all of these ideas predate our current board and our current administration. So I would like to address and hopefully dispel the belief that this was purposefully rushed, random, and conspiratorial that was proposed by administration and recommended by CAC this fall. That is not the case. I would also like to acknowledge that we have students, families, and staff members that will be directly impacted by this consolidation plan that are excited at the prospect of what a future-ready elementary environment will mean to them as they get to experience it firsthand. However, they are largely quiet about this publicly for fear of negative consequence. These aren't just Westview Elementary folks that are excited. There are Lee Summit Elementary people that are excited as well. Now, I realize that the largest number of the crowd that's still here tonight are not happy with the prospect of a possible joining of two elementary schools together. And I also recognize that change can be difficult, but we, as a board, have a responsibility to make decisions that are good for kids and good for the district. And as such, I fully support this bond proposal and let the public have an opportunity to vote on another no-tax-increase bond in April 2025 because it's good for kids. So thank you.
Board Member Haley?
Yes, the board's counsel suggested that I resubmit the motion because Board Member Johnson wasn't present when I made the motion, so...
If you don't, she can't vote.
Right, yeah, that's... We just want to make sure.
So my apologies to Board Member Johnson for making a motion when she was absent. I didn't realize she was absent, so I'll resubmit the motion. I move that the board approve the resolution authorizing the election on the question of issuance of $225 million in general obligation bonds by the reorganized school district number seven of Jackson County, Missouri.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second. Is there any additional discussion or questions at this time? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is item 10.03, Full Prop C Waiver Ballot Language. Can I get a motion?
Is it possible to move to table this topic until our January meeting?
You can make that motion, yes.
I would like to move to table the topic of the Prop C ballot language until our January 16 meeting.
Second.
Is this just based on time?
Largely. Yeah, actually, yes.
All right, we have a motion and second. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of... Well, it's Board Member Myers. Yeah. All those in favor of tabling this discussion until January? Raise your hand as aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is item 10.04, Approval of the 2025-2026 Calendar.
Would you like to hear from Dr. Carlson, who facilitated this group?
Can we make a motion first, maybe?
I move to approve the 2025-2026 academic calendar as proposed by the Academic Calendar Committee.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Do we have any discussions or questions on this one? Vice President Eslick?
I'm just going to make it really quick. I've kind of made it pretty well-known to... Especially in my board packet questions, that I really am not in favor of a school calendar that puts spring break on top of the election because I think it discourages voter participation from families who are disengaged from actually being present, and then they have to plan to try to do a absentee ballot, and some people just don't think about that. And I think that we should give people maximum opportunity to be engaged in the process. There is an alternative calendar that was submitted that puts spring break middle of March, and that was included in our board update. I am in agreement... It's getting late... With that option B, but I'm not going to support spring break where it sits right now because I would really like to see the election available to our community.
Board Member Miller?
I wholeheartedly agree with Vice President Eslick and for the other... What I was going to ask, and I don't know if this is Dr. Carlson, but I do continue to hear people be upset about having it that late, and so I just was wondering if that's been a, you know, a discussion within the committee.
Dr. Carlson can come up, but the short answer is yes, but he can give you some details of that conversation.
Yes, that has been a discussion. It was a discussion on the committee. It was a discussion on the committee last year because the calendar we have currently that we're working through has the April spring break. So yes, we've gotten feedback on that. We had last year, folks share the same concern that Board Eslick... Board Member Eslick had mentioned as well.
And so that's why there was a secondary recommendation that came to... An alternative, as was just mentioned?
Yeah, I would describe more as we talk through options, and we typically try to present two or three options. Usually, it's two options for the committee members, which is each school building is represented by a staff member on that team, and then they take those calendars back to their schools or their sites to gather feedback from the staff. And this was a topic that we discussed, and it was back and forth last year as well as it was this year.
Okay, I have one more question, and I know it's getting late, so I'm going to... Can you tell me... So one of the things I noticed about this calendar, but also ones in the past, MLK is no longer on there, at least that I saw, and then Good Friday, I know we've taken off too, so I was just wondering if either of those have been considered?
So on the draft, recommended and option B, MLK is still a no-work, no-school day.
Am I missing that? I'm sorry.
On February...
It's January 19.
It's on the document. I think what you're seeing, though, is on the bullet points. It's not there in the bullet points and background information, but it's actually on the calendar being proposed.
I got it. Okay, I apologize.
Sorry about that.
I apologize, yes. I was looking at the ones just on the actual... Okay, so I see that. And then Good Friday, we've just chosen not to have that one off, or maybe it is this on this one.
No, that... Good Friday is a school day, and that was a change made a couple of years ago. We had that last year, we had it again this year. That was another area that we discussed. I mean, we have a lot of... And in the board update that Vice President Eslick mentioned, you know, those list of considerations are there, and we just have a lot of competing things. We have... We have the state statute, we can only start two weeks before Labor Day. We have this, it's been loud and clear from our staff, we don't want to start school on a Monday or Tuesday, we want to start on a Wednesday of the school weeks when we start school. Our secondary schools, we really want to try to end first semester in December. We want to have, we can't have elections in our, our school on election days because of the safety issues it causes. We want to be done by Memorial Day. We want a two-week winter break. So all these things start to compete and just start cramming things together where concessions and decisions have to be made.
Thank you. I was just asking, those are things that constituents have asked me about, so I just thought I'd ask you, and that's helpful, so thank you for explaining the process.
We've gotten questions too. Those are, those are hard, you know, hard conversations, and we've had lots of discussions about those things.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson.
Board Member Myers?
Yes, as someone that was on the ballot last spring, I was pretty perturbed when I saw the school calendar, and I thought, oh my gosh, they're all going to be on spring break. But you know what? Missouri has made it much simpler to early vote, and it's, the process is not nearly as convoluted as it was when I learned about it back in high school. And I think that if, you know, if there's a will, there's a way. As a former practitioner, I can tell you, not everyone will agree with me that's still in the classroom, sorry, I liked the first of April for spring break. That is a long haul when you don't have spring break in April and you don't get out of school until the latter part of May, because the closer you get to May 1, the squirlier it gets, all the way around. So I, and not everyone will agree with me in the audience probably, but I liked it there personally, just because it kind of, you're like, okay, we've got this, and so that's just my experience, but if there's a will, there's a way they're going to vote, I think. It's just, it's just a matter of winning too.
Board Member Haley?
Yeah, Dr. Carlson, can you shed some insight into the committee's thought process as to why they didn't want to allow the voters to have that, that time with, with school being in session?
Yeah, I can, and I'll start with, you know, it's probably a false presumption that they didn't want that. This was a really divided discussion. A year ago, we had long discussions, we stayed late, went back and forth, had a discussion in the room about what is option B but for this year, and we could not get consensus. And really, the prevailing logic was that, that two weeks at spring break and for students to come back on Tuesday in January instead of Monday, because we always have a teacher workday before the second semester starts. So the teacher workday happens on Monday, and then students return on Tuesday when we return in January. The other version is we moved that teacher workday to the Friday, and then students start Monday. And that was the, the big rub, I guess you would say, between the election day, spring break, because you lose a day when you do that. There's a lot of discussion this year, and we did an activity where we did 100 pennies, and you could divide up your pennies and decide where it would land, and it was close. I mean, we're talking 1,200 to 1,100-ish. So it was close, so I wouldn't, it was not a strong one way or the other. This was a consensus that they arrived to after lots of discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Carlson.
Board Member Johnson?
So as I look at the calendar and listening to similar sentiments about spring break being late, so again, me just looking at it, it's like we're in school January, February. To me, March sounds like a good middle point, and then you got April and May left. So two months in school, get spring break in March, and then two months of school left. I know maybe as a teacher, the squirrely thing, I deal with squirrely people all day at home, I mean, at home, but I'm not discounting the squirreliness, but I like symmetry, and having it in March seems more symmetric to me. And then I don't know how that impacts having school closed on the 8th of April for the election in terms of the number of school days. I'll be honest, I didn't look at all of that, but I don't know what that means in terms of if we have enough school days to meet our weighted ADA and all those things.
If you don't mind, I'll try to answer it. So if, if spring breaks in March, which by the way, that's what I was always used to as well, and I'm surprised, I've been surprised two years in a row that that wasn't the recommendation, because if you have a kid in another district, you live in another district, you probably want to have spring break same time your kid does. That being said, a large percent of our staff live in our community, that's kind of rare for school districts, and we have about 80 or 100 kids that come with their, their parent that live out of our community because they work for us and come in. So that's minimized there. If spring breaks in March, there's a day added somewhere else, where we can still have election day off. I don't know, Mr. Haley, were you, or Board Member Haley, were you asking why do we close on the election day itself?
Negative, I was just asking why the thought, what the thought process was for the committee.
And I, my understanding, Dr. Carlson, is that the committee was very strong on they wanted option A, which is uploaded, but I don't, is that correct? Again, I, I probably would have picked B myself, but I always want to support committee, so I would recommend that we do A even though that's not what I would have done.
The consensus of the group was option A. Last year, we weren't able to get to a consensus, but we could on what is, what we're living now, and it was back and forth, and the consensus of the group was option A. But like I said, we did an activity, and it was, it was divided, there's pros and cons, there's, you know, advantages if you're an elementary person versus a secondary person, and lots of discussion around that.
Is there anything else that we haven't asked you about that you think is important for us to know before making this decision? Is there anything that stood out to you, maybe as conversation that you heard or things that were considered that we didn't bring up?
I appreciate that question. I did print copies of option B in case people wanted them in front of them to look at, and option A is in the packet, it's also in the December 5th board update. No, I, I think you're seeing it, I think it's, you know, there was a lot of discussion last year that we do invite community members to be on the team. Last school year, there was a community member that had the same concerns about having folks out of our community during an election day. But then there was also discussion in the room about early voting, absentee voting, and the things that we now have available. And really, I guess, I just want to emphasize again, this really came down to the winter break being a full two weeks, and kids then starting on Tuesday instead of Monday when they come back from the break versus where the spring break landed. That, that right there is, was the discussion and the sticking point. And this was what we came to a consensus on.
So you're saying option B, it's not a full two-week break if you go with option B because you have spring break?
So on option B, well, it's a full two-week break for students, but teachers would come back on the Friday, January 2nd, for their professional development and workday, and then students would start on Monday, January 6th.
Board Member Myers?
Yes, we have done that before, and that is less than optimal as far as when we're looking to try to do things to support our staff and when whatnot, that doesn't really, it's, it's a gesture, really. That's, that's lousy. So kind of like we've also started with students on a Friday coming back one year, and that was like equally awful. So I think this is a good compromise right here.
Vice President Eslic?
I really don't want to make our teachers come back on a Friday and not have a weekend part of their vacation, but I also really don't like spring break where it is for the election and also because of how late it is, because I also have heard those complaints as well. I just think these are two less-than-optimal options for different reasons, and I feel like I don't want to hurt our staff, but I would really like for the next time this comes around to try and explore other options that don't bring the staff back on a Friday after break, but can still accomplish moving spring break away from the election. But just to not hurt the staff, I will be in support of the recommendation, but ultimately I hope that this district can move away from where they, where the last couple of years of spring break has been.
If I would offer, there's another option, which is even worse, I think, that you could have last day on Tuesday to 26th after a three-day holiday. I would not do that. Just know, that could happen though if we had a ton of snow days. I would not advise doing that. What I would advocate for is that we all advocate to legislators to allow us to go to school earlier than two weeks before Labor Day, which we used to be able to do, which alleviated all these issues. We had much more freedom to choose things, so that, that came into law maybe six, seven years ago, and we, it just really limited our options on the calendar. If you're going to, unless you're going to a four-day week. If you're going to a four-day week, you got all kinds of options, and I'd never want to go to a four-day week.
And if I may, so that, that guideline on the two weeks before Labor Day, that is, you know, the tourism, the state fair, it's, it's the extending summer guideline, because we, for years, started a week earlier than we do now, and that changed the statute and law is what moved us to where we now have this compression of we want to start on a Wednesday. It can only, we're starting as early as we possibly can, we don't, we want to be done by Memorial Day, we want a two-week break, we have these holidays in the middle, which then make Good Friday go away, those types of things are all what compressed this schedule. We did discuss, I did share that, that board members wanted this considered, discussed, the room did discuss this. They even asked, you know, are we getting a nudge that we have to do this from the board? I said, no, no, they want you to, they just really want you to consider this and the implications to it. And they did discuss it and wrestle with it, and went back and forth, but they still landed on the calendar you see recommended here.
Okay, at this time, I see no other questions or items for discussion? With that being said, we have a motion and second on the floor, I believe? Yes, okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have item 10.05, board policy FF, facility names. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the second reading of board policy FF as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Are there any questions or discussion? Board Member Miller?
I just have something really quick, and I think this is for Joe. Do we know, does this policy recommend, as it's written, does it cover like detached spaces as well? So like, i.e. a pavilion?
I think when it says space, I think that would be like a pavilion, and it's only going forward. We're not going to go retroactively, say, like, there was a female superintendent here in the early 90s, Gail Williams, the library at Norris is named after her. We wouldn't go, oh, this policy passed, we're taking Gail's name off her. Gail's name's staying on there, this is about moving forward.
Yep, no, I know it's not retroactive, I was just wondering, I was just making sure we're, we're talking about all the spaces.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It has to be spaces.
Thank you.
And I would say building principals are excited to have clarity because they get asked all the time.
All right, seeing no other questions? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next up is item 10.06, renaming of the Aquatic Center.
I move that the Board of Education retain the current name of the Lee Summit Aquatic, R7 Aquatic Center.
Second. Motion and second. Board Member Myers?
Thank you for making this a discussion, I was just going to leave it alone, but I owe a big thank you to Ms. Bergen and her team for working on this project. I know my request cost you a lot of work, and that wasn't my intention, so I thank you for that. I'd also like to show my appreciation for the community members that served on her committee. I don't know who you are, but I do appreciate your time on this task. When I originally set this goal, it was about the same time that I set the goal of trying to win the school board election, and let's be honest, I had no idea if either were possible. So upon winning, I knew I had to at least try to get this building renamed. I still would like to have seen it happen, but that's okay. I recognize that there have been a number of terrific student athletes that have competed in the Aquatic Center over the years, as well as some dynamite coaches, but I wanted to recognize the guy that by my estimation got the building built. You see, I felt if the building wouldn't have been built, their success would have happened, but it just would have happened elsewhere, probably at the Longview Pool that we would have been renting. However, the committee didn't agree with my perspective and recommended we leave the building named as it is, and while I'm disappointed, I respect the work of the committee, and again, I thank you for your consideration. To my coach, I hope you're not still awake. I hope you know how hard I tried, and truthfully, this probably would have meant as much to me as it would have to you. I tip my cap to you for all you've done for me personally as well as professionally, and for the student athletes that benefited and continue to benefit from your service to R7. Thank you.
Board Member Johnson?
I just wanted to say that as they see me and my mentee, I do know that this meant a lot to her, and I know at one point it was considered that a plaque could be presented in this person's honor, and if that is all still possible, I would fully support that.
Board Member Myers, if you're interested in doing that, can you work with Katie, and we'll get said plaque and we'll invite?
Oh, heck yes, I can work with Katie, we can totally do that.
So for example, we did that maybe two years ago for Judy Nolan for 52 years of service on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and so we've done stuff like that before.
Oh, I would love the opportunity, thank you so much, yes.
Absolutely.
All right, with that being said, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have items 11.01 through 11.04, written reports. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.